Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the special Valentine's Day edition of the Zoning Board of Appeals, otherwise known as February the 14th, 2023. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Seeing none, at this time, I'm going to ask that everyone place any electronic devices or phones on silent and that you maintain that during the meeting so that the meeting is not interrupted by phone chatter. Otherwise, I would like to begin this meeting by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Mr. Brian Gallagher to lead us in then.
I want allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. So, we have a busy agenda tonight. The items on the agenda are set by specific times. We will not begin before the set time. We may begin after the set time. If anyone wishes to speak on any of the matters before us, and it is a public hearing, and most of the time even if it's not, I will ask if anyone wishes to speak on the matter before us, please keep your comments until the matter is before you, and we ask for public comment. I appreciate everyone's help in getting through this meeting, keeping their comments confined to the matter at hand, and brief and to the point so that we can all go home and be with our loved ones this evening. The first matter before us is ZBA 2022-14. This is 76 Summer Street. It is a review of a special permit under Section 181.94 to operate an adult daycare service pursuant to Section 181.313(c)(1), located in the neighborhood Business District, map 70, block 13, lot 0. Welcome. You are Mr. Daniel Estevez, right?
Yes.
Welcome back to our meeting.
Good evening, too.
Happy Valentine's Day.
All right. I'm going to ask Mr. Gallagher to take the lead on this dialogue with you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Good evening, Daniel. How are you doing tonight?
Not bad, not bad.
Good. I'd like to, I have a few questions for you, going over the conditions that we had set during our last meeting.
Yep.
And I'd like to know if, I'm going to start by asking you, you're looking to occupy 5,000 square feet.
Yes.
That's correct. Is there any change to that square footage at all?
Uh, no.
No.
No, so, no, not at all.
Okay. How do you stand with the project right now?
All right, so, it's been a long, long, long process, especially going back and forth with DPH. Right now, we're pretty much like ready to go. They finally came in to audit the facility about two weeks ago.
Okay.
And all that they're asking in order to move forward is, they wanted us to submit a waiver for approval, and the waiver consists of the evacuation plan. They need a very specific evacuation plan because the facility sits on the second floor.
Right.
So, they need to, just like you guys, meet and discuss if our plan would be good enough or safe enough for the clients that we will potentially have in the facility.
Right.
So, we submitted the waiver. So, now, we're just waiting for them to come back, review it, walk through it with us, and then hopefully, they say, "You're good to go." But they, everything else, as far as, I think the city was great at helping us obtain all the certificates, the permits, the, we got those ready to go, all the fire extinguishers, the, I've been on top of the building owner, Sean.
Yeah.
Him and I have been working really, really well together. We haven't had any issues with the elevator. I know that you guys have mentioned that before.
Yeah.
I spoke to him about the parking situation, and so far, I don't know if, he told me that nothing has happened yet as far as like him selling the other half of the parking lot.
Okay.
But that he'll keep me posted on that. I mentioned it to DPH. DPH didn't have an issue with it.
Okay.
As far as the entrance of the building, the hallways, the facility in itself inside, they're very content with. Their only concern was the evacuation plan, especially with folks on wheelchairs. In that waiver, we submitted to them, so we're just waiting for, that's where we're at now.
So, you have an evacuation plan in place currently with them.
Correct.
Did they give you any indication as to when they would have their findings with you?
They did not. So, in my experience, at our other adult day healthcare in Leicester, we submitted a waiver, but it was different. It was for the hallways. They were a little bit too narrow.
Right.
They ended up approving them, approving it, but it took them like three weeks, three weeks to a month, because the documentation has to go through different channels within their department before they make a decision.
Okay.
So, but according to the auditor, she loved the place. She really likes it. She, you know, wants to do her best to push it forward.
Right.
So, again, everything's in their hands at the moment.
So, when were they actually out to do this audit?
What's that?
When were they actually out to do the audit with you?
To come back?
Yeah.
They're going to let me know once they review, like the waiver is final.
Okay.
So, once the waiver is final, and they approve it on paper, they have to come out and, you know, review everything again.
Okay.
But primarily, the evacuation plan.
Okay. So, upon their approval?
Yep.
How soon would you open?
Immediately.
Immediately?
Oh, yeah. In the background already, we've been, literally, I'm waiting for that answer so that I can then speak with the city, do a proper ribbon cutting with, you know, an open house. We already have four rest homes in the area that are willing to work with us and send us clients.
Oh, good.
So...
Very good.
We're just anxiously waiting.
Anxious to get going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have the workers already, the startup team.
Okay.
So, again, it's just depending on this waiver.
Okay. Does the startup team still consist of 10 employees?
Uh, no. It'll be less.
It'll be, it'll be less, yeah.
Again, I think I mentioned to you guys previously that we would hire based on demand.
Right.
So, at the beginning, we're not going to have 60 people. We may care for, let's say, if we enroll 10 to start up, we're going to hire for 10.
Okay.
But right now, our startup team will consist of an activities director, a nurse, and two CNAs.
Okay.
And then I'll be in and out to make sure that everything's flowing the way it's supposed to.
So, upon full operation, there would be about 10 employees, correct?
Correct.
No more than 10?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. What about the striping of the parking lot? Has that been totally completed?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, he did those, but he needs to correct the, and I believe he already did that also before like the winter started. The handicap, and I think he did because DPH didn't say anything about it, and I believe it was okay.
Okay.
So, where they painted the handicap logo on the parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
They didn't stripe the one next to it.
The van space.
They didn't block it off.
The van space.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and I believe that was done.
Okay.
As soon as we had the last meeting, I mentioned it to him, and he got on it.
Okay. Okay, great. Very good. I have no more questions.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Does any board member have any other questions for the permit holder? Before you, I'll let you comment again, but we did have two comments from departments. The Board of Health did issue a response. Thank you very much, Board of Health. They said that they have no issue with the project. And the Community Development Office did issue a comment. I'm just going to say, I'm going to read this into the record. I'm not sure it was clear to Community Development that the permit had already been granted to you.
Okay.
Okay? The comment is, "This office building's configuration is not conducive to the arrival of quantities of seniors at peak periods. Aside from zoning considerations, introducing adult daycare use into this building, practically speaking, will be challenging for those clients while also burdening other office tenants and their customers who seek to use the elevators during peak pickup and drop-off times for the seniors." Would you like to respond to that comment?
Uh, yes, of course. In my humble opinion, I, I mean, I would have to disagree with the comment respectfully. There's other mental health services, therapists in there that have clients that go in there with very similar conditions of the clients that we would potentially care for. So, when people think of adult day healthcare, they think automatically that it's just for seniors, and that's not the case. The service is for anyone, it's meant for anyone that's over the age of 18, right? And so, with any, you know, either mental health or physical disability, and therefore, they can't care for themselves, and we would be able to provide that care during the day. But it's not just for seniors. You know, a 19-year-old could present some difficulties just as a senior would.
So, you're servicing people with developmental disabilities and not just physical handicaps or elderly persons who...
Correct, yeah. So, who knows? Like maybe at a given time, we may not even have someone, like all of our clients per se are not going to be all wheelchair-driven, or they're not all going to be Alzheimer's. They're not all going to be autistic, right? So, you know, at a given time, we may not even have anyone that's on a wheelchair. You know, at a given time, we may not have clients that are autistic or that are, you know, you know, part of the spectrum. We may have clients that come from DDS, and there's so many places that could send us referrals with people that have different medical and mental health issues. So, in being in the building, I've seen many different clients that get serviced in there by therapists and other, you know, offices in there. There's home care agencies in there, and they do work very similar to what we do except that they do it in their homes. We do it actually in the facility. So, I don't foresee, UMass used to be there, so, you know, I don't foresee it being a problem.
So, thank you for the response.
Yeah.
And in trying to wind this up, did you have anything else you wanted to offer to the board?
Yeah, of course. So, one last thing is, just so that if you guys have this question, I am anticipating that a response will be given to us definitely in March.
Okay.
I'm saying March, just to give it some time. It may be, who knows, next week. But a response, whether it's a yes or a no, it'll be given in March, and so, just to kind of, you know, plan ahead, just in case you guys want to meet with me again.
Would you, would you then say that you're going to be in operations by May definitively?
Definitely. And if, and if we're not, then we will let you guys know of the decision anyway. I can email Mercedes and let her know about the outcome of, you know, the waiver generally, and then...
Thank you, Mr. Estevez.
Thank you, guys.
Is there any other person here who wishes to speak on this petition or this special permit review? I see none before us or online. Mr. McLaughlin, did you want to make a statement or a question?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Just for clarification, the comments that were, that you had read off, who were those from?
This is, that comment was from Community Development. It is not clear who in Community Development...
Okay, so, it wasn't from any of the current tenants in the building?
No. Our own city department issued that comment.
Okay. Wow. I guess my only feedback would be that if there were our tenants within the building, I would assume they would have been notified for this application?
They should have, well, the property owner would have been notified. I'm not sure that notice would have gone out to the individual tenants.
Okay.
Other than, of course, our usual advertising and the posting of the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I appreciate the comments from Community Health. I just was kind of a little thrown off that the assumption is the, I guess not, the tenants get notified, but a little different twist each case, right?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think this case should be up for further review. I would like it to be reviewed when you're in operation.
Okay.
And I would suggest that some board members might want to see the operation to the extent that you can do that with the population that you have in there.
Of course.
And that I would, as you have board members tour, specifically address the comment from Community Development by demonstration, or you're welcome to issue a written response that can be included at the next meeting for you. Okay. Do we have a motion on this review?
I'll make a motion. I just would like to ask what the board wants for a review period. Is it going to 3, 6, 1?
I would say that my comment would be, I want it to be in operation for a month or two before we have a review so that we can see what the operation is when we go in.
Okay, so, this would be May, June?
June is fine by me.
I think that's good. Just want to give time so we don't keep having repeats.
Absolutely.
Sounds good.
Okay. So, I'm going to make the motion on ZBA 2022-14 to approve the review for this application at 76 Summer Street with the conditions as originally written, except we're going to strike condition number seven and replace it with a review on June 13th, 2023.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. The review is continued until our June meeting. We will see you then. Best of luck with your estate permitting.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next matter before us is ZBA 2023-01, Zero Minneapolis Ave. This is the continuance of an appeal to overrule the building commissioner's decision under Section 181.92 of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to construct a single-family house on a 6,000-square-foot lot less than the minimum required pursuant to Section 181.416, located in the residential A district.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good evening. Welcome back to our meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome back to this public hearing. I am going to ask if you have any additional comment or statements you would like to make to the board.
Nothing additional, just supplemental based on the review last time. At the time of the last meeting, the board had requested that we have a survey, a layout of the corners, pin the corners for review and confirmation of the frontage. That was done, and I'm hoping that the board, members of the board, might have been able to confirm that the frontage does in fact exceed 50 feet as represented.
We'll go to board comment afterwards. I'll just, for brevity's sake, I'll note that I did go out. I saw the pins. Thank you for setting them. I am happy that the boundaries will be clear. I did take a tape measure out there, and I came to 52 and 1/2, so...
Thank you.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Nothing further, unless the board asks questions. Happy to field anything, but at this time, nothing to add.
Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against the appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to speak for the appeal? Seeing none. Our building commissioner is with us remotely. I am just going to ask the building commissioner to weigh in if he has any commentary on this matter or the appeal before us.
Thank you. I have no comment, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barbadoro. All right. Mr. Reynolds, any comment or question? Okay. Eric, any comment or question?
Yeah, I mean, the deed research history at the last meeting was pretty comprehensive.
Thank you.
I feel very confident that it's a grandfathered lot, and if anyone at this point feels it's not, well, they can appeal this decision, because I think what we have is about as good as it's going to get.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher, any question or comment?
I do not. Thank you for going out and pinning the property. I got the same measurements as everyone else. Appreciate that for clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin, any comment?
Thank you for taking the time to let us come out and actually do the site visit. And Attorney Kuritzky, great presentation. I mean, you really kind of dug through the weeds, I think, and did some intense research.
Thank you.
I think much beyond that our building commissioner, you know, had the time to really delve into...
Yeah. I appreciate his efforts.
Going years back.
We worked well together. It was, it was great. It had that little funky issue with tax takings and stuff, so there was, I think it was, it was great, working with the town, with the city. Loved working with the city. Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Counsel, on my behalf, I appreciate very much the research that you provided, and I believe the entire board and probably the building commissioner appreciate the depth of research. Most people, when they approach the board or the building department on a five-and-five lot, on a grandfathered lot, they don't actually bother to do the research on the abutting lots, and it is always difficult for the building commissioner to allow that without that research. I have reviewed the title search you've done. I am fully satisfied with it.
Thank you.
And I appreciate all the effort. Ma'am, you should be appreciative of all the work that your counsel has put into this case.
Thank you.
That being said, if there is nothing further from any person, I am going to ask for a motion on the appeal, and a motion's going to be in the affirmative.
Okay, I'll make that motion under ZBA 2023-01 to Tammy Prentice for the property at Zero Minneapolis Ave to approve and overrule the building commissioner's decision with regards to the request as written.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of overruling the building commissioner's decision?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Therefore, it is unanimously overruled. I am going to say, I don't think the building commissioner has any problem with that and is in fact appreciative of the research that you did.
Thank you.
Because we, of course...
Thank you, folks.
Don't always have the resources for that.
Thank you.
So, that being said, I think you're free to seek your building permit barring any other incident. Good luck. Thank you. All right, and thank you for coming before the board. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Happy Valentine's Day, folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Just got my duct snare over here. There we go. Where is the case number? No, just the case number.
2023-03.
Okay, 2023-03. All right, is it time?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'll call the matter.
All right, calling the next matter on our agenda, that is ZBA 2023-03 for 53 Mechanic Street. This is a request for a special permit under Section 181.94 of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to keep chickens in a multifamily property pursuant to Section 181.313, located in the residential C district. Ma'am, can you please state your name and address for the record?
It's Rhonda Stebbins, 53 Mechanic Street, Fitchburg.
Thank you very much. I am going to have Mr. Chartren lead the questioning, so please feel free to follow his lead in presenting your petition.
How's it going? How long have you had these animals? How long have they been providing you with relief?
I've had them since the beginning of summer.
Okay.
Like last February, actually, I hatched them out myself.
Sure.
And then they go to camp with me in the summer, and in the winter, they have to come, well, they stayed at the house because of, there's no, like, water or food available for them way out at camp.
Yeah.
So, I keep them from November till the end of March, beginning of April, weather permitting, and then I'll bring them back to camp, and then next winter, hopefully, I can bring them back for the winter.
Okay, so, are they, are they indoors during that time?
Sometimes they do, yeah. I got pictures. Do you want to see them?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you. These are very, very interesting chickens.
Aren't they? They don't fly, and they're just, they're just so awesome.
Thanks, no problem. All right, so now, I'm going to go through a specific line of questioning for you to try to, you know, figure out if this is something we can permit. All right, so, is this request for emotional support or service animal?
Yeah, they, they're my pets, and they help me with anxiety and depression.
Okay, so it's, but they're, they're emotional support, they're not service animals, right?
Right.
Okay. Have, has a reasonable accommodation been made? Do you know?
Not that I'm aware of, not right now.
And is this related to a disability that you have?
Yes.
Okay. And have you provided the city with any supporting documentation of this disability?
I can. I mean, I have PTSD, I have depression really bad, and I have anxiety.
Sure.
So, I mean, I can.
Okay. And you're, you're keeping them as pets, household pets?
Yeah.
And which ways do they provide relief to that?
Oh, because they're just so fun to watch. Like, the things that they do just make me, they just make me smile. If I'm depressed or upset, I can go out there and sit with them, and it just helps me calm down.
Okay.
I keep them inside sometimes.
Okay. And why do you think this is a reasonable request of the Board?
Why do I think it's reasonable?
Yeah.
Because they're not hurting anybody, they're, they're not, you know, they're not bothering anybody. I did have a rooster way back, but I got rid of it, so I just have the hens now.
Okay.
And, you know, other, I've got, I've got signatures of people that, you know, love them, and they bring their cat over, they walk their cat, and the cat sits with them for a while. I got neighbors upstairs that have a little Boston terrier that comes out and sits with them. I got these folks here that go and sit with them.
Yeah, so at 53, there's nine units?
Yes.
Okay, and obviously, you have some support.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here that was, is there anyone in your building that is bothered by them?
Yeah, just one person.
Just one person?
Yeah, but he's just bothered with everything you do.
Ma'am, please reserve comments until the public comment.
So just one, but they didn't take the time to show up?
Correct.
Okay, all right, and now... I don't think I have any more further questions for you. I think I've answered all the ones I want to answer. I got one last one, actually. So the owner of the building?
Yeah.
Have they provided a, any kind of documentation saying they're all right with it?
Yeah, he wrote, he wrote on here, he was the first one to sign it.
Okay, yeah, can you pass that up so we can pass it around, let everybody see it? All righty, thank you. Yeah, so he just signed?
Yep.
Okay.
He loves them, too. He brings his dog over and sits with them, too. I also had them tested for, like, the avian flu and all that. All the blood work was done, they're all negatives.
Okay, did they, so you bring them to the VET, I guess?
No, the state, USDA, came out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they came out and blood tested them, blood tested all of them.
Okay.
So I got the results today.
All right. I don't know enough about long-term care of fowl or chicken in general, so I wouldn't be the person to ask about, you know, if they can contract these types of things later and stuff like that. That would require more research on my part, but like I said, I think you've answered all the questions I have, and now I'm going to turn it over to the Board for any questions they may have.
I think we should go to public comment first.
Public comment, all right. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment? We're going to go with in favor?
We're all in favor. They're adorable. We love them. They live under my windows.
Ma'am, again, if you wish to make a comment, you are welcome to, but please approach, approach us, stand at the podium, state your name and address.
Just state your name and address.
My name is Karen Casey, 53 Mechanic Street, Apartment 1A, and it's like a studio, but they're right outside my window.
Mm-hmm.
They don't disturb me or bother me at all. You know what I mean?
Tell them about your cat sitting in the window watching them.
Yeah, my cat sits in the window and actually watches them, you know? But that's all I have to say, you know, like...
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your coming to the meeting and giving your comment.
Because they're like my emotional support now, too.
Everybody loves them.
Is there any other person who would wish to stand and offer their comment? Please approach the podium and state your name and address. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Smith. I live in the apartment above Rhonda. I've known Rhonda for about seven years now, and when I first met her, she had told me that she worked with animals pretty much all her life. And so when she got the chickens, she did come and ask everybody, you know, in the building, you know, if they had a problem, you know, with the animals, because a lot of us, you know, like, work, you know, like, different hours, and nobody had a problem, like she said, other than one person. And everybody in the building, you know, they have their pets and stuff, and they do all come outside and sit with the animals. And like I said, she loves animals. She would be the first one to rescue an animal. You know, if an animal is in trouble, she's there. So if anybody I feel that, you know, should be able to have, you know, these chickens, I think it should be her. You know, she's a good person. She takes care of these animals. When she goes to her camp, like she says, she takes the animals, you know, with her. She's out there every day, you know, the neighbors are out there. I've even seen people come up in the yard and go straight to the animals, so...
Thank you, ma'am, for coming and offering your comment.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Elizabeth.
Is there any other person here who would like to make a comment on this petition for or against or ask a question? Okay. Yes, sir, please approach, state your name and address.
My name's Donald LeBlanc. We're the next, the neighbor of the next house up, and we don't have any problem with them at all, and it seems like a good thing, not a bad thing. And they're not farm animals there for her support, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see anyone else with their hand raised to make a comment except our building commissioner. Mr. Barbadoro, please, you're welcome to make any comment on this petition.
Thank you. I wanted to make two comments. One is, a complaint was raised that there was, that the chickens were being stored in the basement of the building in the winter, and that there was a extension cord that went to a heating appliance, and that the, my concern is for the safety of the occupants of the building. If you're heating a space for chickens, there is, in a building that is, you know, over 100 years old and probably has BX wiring in it, I have a concern. There's probably not smoke detectors in that area, there's certainly not sprinklers in the building, and it's a bit of a fire risk. So if this is approved, I would ask that protective measures be established to make sure that the occupants of the building don't get burned. The second comment was, the applicant came to the Building Department one day and told me that this was only for a period of a few months during the winter and that the chickens would be relocated at that point. And I would ask the Chair to, to seek clarification in that regard from the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Ma'am, could you respond to that question on the length of time you're keeping these birds?
Yeah, like I said, they come in, I brought them in in November for the winter, then they'll leave again at the end of March, beginning of April, weather permitting. And then they'll go back up to the camp, and then I asked that they can come back again in November, the beginning of November, and stay for the winter again. And they were never in the basement, ever. I would never put them in the basement. I have a beautiful shed for them that I bought, they're all enclosed, so they've, they've never been in the basement. Like, if it gets cold, they come into the house. They come in with me.
They come into your apartment?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me ask you, is, are you aware if there's a space heater down there for another purpose?
There is not a space heater. What happened was, I had an extension cord, indoor/outdoor extension cord, and inside the shed, I had a heat lamp that was way up high, and it's all strapped and could never fall or anything like that, and I did have it going out the back of the shed and down into the basement. To me, it doesn't, it's kind of like somebody plugging in inflatables outside. That could be a fire hazard, too, but everybody does it, and I wasn't trying to start a fire or anything, I was trying to keep them warm in the wintertime. And it wasn't on all the time, it was just on those very, very cold nights, but it's been since taken out of there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did have a response, again, from Community Development. There was no comment on this petition. From Board of Health, thank you, Board of Health, there was a comment on this petition. Their comment is that it's a congested residential area and could cause a nuisance. That is their comment. I'm going to turn it over to other Board members at this point for any questions or comments.
Questions.
No questions or comments. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask the petitioner, you mentioned bringing the birds in the house.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a pen for them inside the house as well?
I do, yes.
You do?
I do.
Okay, and you have a total of eight?
I have nine.
You have nine?
Nine, yeah.
Okay, and the pictures provided, is this at 53 Mechanic Street?
Some of it is in the backside. Can I show you?
Yes, please.
Okay. This one is at the house.
Okay.
This is at the house.
Okay.
This is at camp. This is at camp.
Okay.
This is at camp. So it's got a ten-by-ten shed.
Okay.
This is at camp. This is at camp, this is at camp. They've got the carport enclosure.
Right.
That's at camp, that's at the house. That's at the camp, camp. It's here, camp. Like, camp, yeah, because of the...
Okay.
So these ones are at my house.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
That's at the house.
Okay, all right. How old are the birds?
They're, they're just under a year.
A year.
A year.
So you spent a lot of time with them when they were chicks to make them so that they're pets?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm aware of the process, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah, the conditions appear to be very clean and well cared for.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification, you keep referencing camp.
Yes.
Do you have a summer camp?
Yes, up in Deer, New Hampshire. I go up there from April to October, late October, sometimes early November.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's called Oxbow Campground.
Is it, what is it, a three-season? It's not, it's not year-round, right?
It's not year-round, no, no, not year-round.
Okay. Just a quick question. Did you, before you brought the chickens to your residence, did you go to the Building Department or City Hall to make inquiry?
I did not. I didn't even think about it.
As to if they're allowed by right?
I did not, because I know other people that have chickens, and nobody's ever said anything, so I figured it'd be okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. And as far as the request for emotional support and its criteria, how many do you have?
Nine.
Okay. Would one provide support?
It would, but I have all of them that I'm very attached to. And they, when I come out, they come running up to me, they squat down for me, I mean, I can hold every single one of them and pet them and love on them, so I wouldn't want to separate any of them.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions for the applicant, I'm just going to note, we did in fact, and I'm sorry I missed this, we had two additional comments come in. The first one is a letter from Mr. John Hussey or Husey of 53 Mechanic Street, Apartment Six.
Yep.
He opposes the chickens being under his porch. He is on the second floor...
Ma'am? Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
It's just the way we can all hear each other. "The chickens leave droppings, and they urinate in the dirt, and it's not picked up. It saturates into the ground and stinks. There is hay thrown down, but it's not absorbing the feces and urine. The chickens also kick and peck the hay out of a 12-inch-high fence that is not solid. There is hay and dirt all over the driveway and entrance to my steps leading to my apartment. So now, in dragging in filth into my apartment because I have to sleep in it, there are more people in the apartment building who do not want the chickens there also, but they don't want to get involved. The woman who owns the chickens has made several threats to me for contacting the Health Department. There is an ordinance or law, or whatever you want to call it, about chickens not being allowed in a multi-apartment dwelling. I'm pretty sure everyone knows this. For the sake of everybody's health and welfare, this ordinance should be enforced. Thank you, John Husey." The second comment is from Mark Sullivan, who is an inspector in the Building Department. "We have had several complaints from a tenant as well as neighbors. The applicant created a, quote, 'chicken coop' against the side of the building with straw floor and heat lamp powered by an extension cord. This was a fire hazard with the potential of catching the building on fire. The heat lamp was removed, but something would be needed during freezing temperatures. This is a congested neighborhood, and in my opinion, not the proper location for chickens." And that is all of the public comments that we have. For me, ma'am, I'm just going to ask you, you've asked for something that I believe is allowed by special permit under certain circumstances in your area, or can be allowed pursuant to a reasonable accommodation, and you've been taken through the questions on that. A reasonable accommodation is offered to someone who possesses a disability and meets certain criteria. We'll move into deliberations in a moment, but you have not provided documentation for most of the criteria.
I didn't know I had to. Nobody told me to.
We're not obligated to advise you, ma'am. But one of the questions that in particular is important for me to understand, because a request to keep something that is not a normal household pet, and the law defines that specifically saying any poultry or barnyard fowl are not normal household pets, as an emotional support animal, because it cannot be a service animal. A service animal is only, only a dog under the law. You have to show that you need this particular animal or this particular type of animal. And so my question is, how would you, how would you document the fact that you need both chickens and ate chickens?
How would I?
As related to your disability?
Because they, they help me. They, they calm me down, and they're just a comfort to me.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I need them.
I, I assume that you are sincere in your statements to the Board.
Yes.
I understand that. Okay. Do you have anything else before we deliberate?
John Hussey, he's mad. Honestly, he's mad at me because where I have the chickens, he used to keep his stuff there. I asked him nicely if he would move his stuff. I was very, like, I asked everybody whether they would like me to have them or not have them, would it cause a fuss or whatever. I've got photographs of this guy, his dog in his house, he comes downstairs and he wipes it on our rugs, because our doors are, mine and hers are together, like this, and we have rugs outside. I got video, I can go get it and show it to you, that he freaking wipes his poop, dog's poop, all over our rugs.
Mm-hmm.
You know, he's just, he, he's just an... To be honest with you, he, he doesn't like certain things. The roof is 20 feet above. He doesn't even walk by my chickens. He parks at the end of the parking lot, the chickens are way over here, he walks up the parking lot, goes up his stairs, they're nowhere near for him to be. He just makes, he makes a point to walk over to them. Why do you have to make a point to walk over to them? You don't. There's no need for you to walk over to them.
Okay. Thank you for your response, ma'am. Thank you for coming to the Board. We're going to close the hearing now, and we're going to move on to deliberation. Does any...
Question, Madam Chair, before we close?
Okay.
The chickens go to camp April 1st?
They go...
Just short answer, with date.
Sure.
Weather permitting. When do they go? Okay, so around...
March, or it could be the first week in April.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you go to camp also?
Yes.
The whole time the chickens are there?
Yep, I go there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one question also.
Okay.
Chickens provide eggs, correct?
Yep.
What do you do with the eggs?
Well, right now, they're not laying eggs because of the weather.
Yep.
Hopefully soon they will be, but it will be when we go to camp, I'm sure.
Okay.
And then I'll be MPIP certified out there at camp. New Hampshire USDA is going to come out and inspect and do all their stuff that they have to do.
Okay.
And out there, while I'm in New Hampshire, will give me the right to either sell the eggs or eat the eggs. I can't eat those eggs. I don't eat the eggs.
Okay.
They're too cute, it freaks me out.
Have you sold them in the past or they haven't?
No, I haven't.
They haven't?
No, they haven't. They just started laying, like, they'll just start laying this year because they're only a year old.
Yeah, they're relatively young.
Yeah, so they're still young.
Okay.
So...
And would you be willing to provide documentation to the board?
Yeah.
Yes?
Of course. Whatever you need.
Okay.
I even have, that I've had them tested and they're all negative for any type of diseases.
No, I don't mean that. I mean for the emotional support that you've expressed.
You want me to get my disability paperwork for you?
I think it would be helpful.
I can do that, yes. Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move to deliberations now. Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, it's okay. Oh, the...
Pictures? Pictures, yeah.
The things that are submitted for a meeting are supposed to be kept and placed in the minutes. Do you need a...
Is it possible for us to take a picture of the pictures and return the artifact?
I am wondering whether the Building Department or Ms. Mata, if you could scan these and then return them, the book to the... Okay. So we'll keep it for tonight, but return it to you.
You can come tomorrow to pick it up afternoon. So I have plenty of time to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chartrand, as you led this discussion, do you have a comment for deliberation?
Yeah. So this case seems to be slightly different than the normal, run-of-the-mill chickens that we normally get, considering, I do believe that they are pets based on their appearance. Problem is that we have a lot of problems with chickens here in the city. And unfortunately, the minority of chicken owners probably ruin it for the majority of chicken owners. And that's what we have to weigh it against. I would be in favor of continuance for paperwork because I think that as an, as a emotional support animal, there's a better chance of us approving this. As a special permit, I, given this criteria, I don't see us being able to approve it. The impact on the natural environment and drainage would be affected. The potential fiscal impact, probably not affected until you weigh in that we're getting these complaints and having to respond to them. There's want to be any utilities or public services. Social, economical, community needs, this would serve only a small percentage of the community. So based on the special permit criteria, I think that this would not be approvable.
Thank you, Mr. Chartrand. Mr. Reynolds, any comment on deliberation?
My comment would be that I would support a continuance for the purpose of allowing the applicant to provide some evidence, appropriate evidence relative to emotional support. Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
I agree with Mr. Chartrand and Mr. Reynolds as well. I'd like to see some more documentation supporting.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin?
I'd be more than happy to honor the board's wishes. What I am concerned about is the property. It's a very dense multifamily. There's very little land. There is a lot of density. There are neighbors that object. I truly and wholeheartedly understand the emotional support and I know that it works. The HUD information that was passed out was specific about the type of animals. And this animal, the chickens, don't meet the criteria. So I'm kind of sitting here going, how do we get over that hurdle? The other concern I have is the number. You know, this isn't, again, the HUD and state information speaks to a support animal, not animals. So in all the information I've read and the information in our bylaws, this is going to be a pretty extreme hurdle to overcome. But if the board would like more information, let's do that.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. My comment on this deliberation is, I would agree wholeheartedly that this does not indicate something that's allowable under the regular special permit. And therefore, I don't see any reason to delay a vote on that portion of the request. As far as the request for a reasonable accommodation, we don't have documentation of disability. We don't have documentation of the need for this particular animal. But even if we did, I cannot foresee myself finding that eight chickens in a multifamily, especially those kept indoors, is a reasonable accommodation. That's a substantial differentiation from the zoning ordinance we have. Provided the other documentation is submitted, I would be willing to consider one to two animals with the correct conditions on it. But I would need to see that there is a need for these particular animals. And, you know, let me just say that I appreciate the fact that all of the neighbors who came out in support, I think that contributes to my willingness to consider any non-common household animal in as an emotional support animal. I also want to say that this is a multifamily and tenants change in a multifamily. The people who are not bothered now may not be the same people who are there in the future. The time limitation is helpful because that, to me, makes it less of a potential problem to the surrounding neighborhood. I am going to ask, ma'am, if you would be willing to, or are you interested in attempting to obtain that documentation on coming back to the board on that issue? Okay. I am going to believe that it would be appropriate to go about two months out because I am talking about documentation either of a recognized disability under something like the Social Security Administration, if there's been a determination, or a physician's letter. Again, the need for the animal, the specific animal from a physician or a qualified therapist. So I would be looking for psychologists, psychotherapists, psychiatrists. Okay? Given what you've said about the nature of your disability. Okay. And I'm just going to ask, because it wasn't clear to me, did the owner of the building sign the application? Okay, that was the person that signed the application. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So given that, I am going to ask if we can have a motion on the request for a special permit without any consideration of a reasonable accommodation.
I will make that motion under ZBA 2023-03.
Okay. This is a motion in the affirmative. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? All those opposed to granting the special permit?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So the special permit alone fails. Could we have a motion on continuing this hearing regarding the request for a reasonable accommodation?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. On the motion?
Just reading. I'm not sure if this is a moment of clarity or not. But just reading the application, the emotional support, is that being applied for here? Because I don't read it there.
I will say that I read it and I recognize that people do not always use the exact language.
So if we feel like it's covered, that's great. Otherwise, I would ask, so do we feel like the emotional support is part of the application?
I do, but I am, of course, one board member.
I have a question as well. Shouldn't that be handled by the ADA coordinator for the city?
Mike, discussions in the past with the building commissioner on this issue indicate that that issue is passed to the ZBA. Mr. Commissioner, would you have any comment on that? Whether we are the appropriate board to handle this matter?
So an ADA coordinator is a person who ensures that municipal properties are made fully accessible. I don't think that the ADA coordinator officiates anything outside of municipal property.
Gotcha.
Anything else on the motion? Okay. Was there a specific date mentioned in this motion?
I'm sorry?
Was there a specific date mentioned in this motion?
No.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
To which date?
I would prefer, I think two months should be. That's documentation that takes some time to gather.
I will amend my motion for a review on April 11th, 2023.
Thank you. And do we have a re-second on that?
Second.
All those in favor of that motion to continue?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that matter is continued to April 11th. Good luck, ma'am, and we will see you at that point in time. Thank you, everyone, for coming and participating.
Are you recusing yourself? For this case that you asked ADA?
Oh, no, I just...
Oh, you want...
I'm never going to participate.
Gotcha. Do we have to be at all concerned?
Oh, take it this way, yeah.
Where's the coffee pot?
I'm so sorry. Thank you for noticing that. Appreciate it. Calling the next matter. This is ZBA 2023-04, 15 Main Street. This is a request for a use variance under Section 181.932 of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to operated Storage and U-Haul Truck Services pursuant to Section 181.313, located in the downtown business district, MAP 56, Block 8, Lot 0.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome, gentlemen. Can you please each state your names and addresses?
I'm Dimukles Suraman, 15 Main Street, the business location. My residence is 211 Marshall Road in Fitchburg.
Okay.
Leon Lee. Business is 70 Worcester Road in Webster. My address is 401 Main Street, Lancaster, Mass.
Okay. Thank you and welcome to you both. I am just going to preface this by stating that you have asked for a use variance. The use variance is the strictest type of relief to request from the zoning board. In general, what you are doing is asking to break the rules. And it is, by case law and statute, supposed to be rarely granted. Keep that in mind as this hearing progresses. Mr. McLaughlin, would you like to lead us on this case, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
In opening with questions?
Please feel free to allow them to make a statement or move forward as you wish.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could just tell us a little bit about your petition and why you're before the board and what relief you would like to request?
Sure. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak my point. The store was closed. It will be few points to explain for the full scenario. That place was closed for about two, three years, probably everyone knows that. And because of the reason, what I found before I opened, for multiple reasons, the competition, the pricing, the rent options and everything, since all the stores are nearby.
Do you just speak just a little bit louder?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Appreciate it.
Since the Market Basket is very close by, the gas station built the store in there. So the store was closed for many reasons as explained. Most of the reason is like it was for the competition and the pricing. I reopened the store about four years, but I rented that place. I don't own the property. The rent is very high. So when I opened that, I realized how much it can cost to operate that business monthly. And I was about to change my mind because what I was earning and to, you know, to run the business, it was completely kind of impossible. So I started seeking the alternate options, what I can add to keep the store open. Then I find out that I can add the U-Haul. The one thing that I didn't do, I didn't discuss with the Building Department before I add that U-Haul to the store. I didn't know that I have to, since it was just a use of the parking space. So I just add that, then I realized that I should have talked to the city before I add that to the store. The commission that I'm getting from the U-Haul is helping me to keep the store open. I know the use variance is very tough and is breaking the rule, like to change the law, which is kind of tough, but it is helping to stay the store open. The store was Store 24, then it changed to Tereski, then it changed to 7-Eleven, then to, then to, what is the other one, the last one? Nobody was able to run that place there. So that keep closing that location because they couldn't make that money that is needed to keep it running. I'm trying my best to stay there open, not to close. And U-Haul is helping me with that commission to keep alive in that location. Now I want to speak about how it is helping the community and the city. Since there's a new building is moving in there, about 44 apartments. It's like the old fire station, I believe, fire department. That is opening now, about to move in all the people. Also, there's a lot of people nearby. They do not drive. They have, they don't have any car, most of them, like so far I know. A lot of people, they don't have any car there. Also, being close to the train station, many people are using train to get there and renting the U-Haul. So the city is getting less traffic. Not everyone having the vehicle there, they can move around. They can use the U-Haul to use their, you know, for their needs. Also, the college is very close by. A lot of students is using that as well for their moving purposes. So far, I think like, and also one other thing that the space that I'm using for that, for U-Haul purposes is kind of unused, you know, using there without idols. for, for U-Haul purposes is kind of unused, you know, using there without idle. Like, there is no parking that I'm using for the store there. It's very big parking there. You guys have already the floor plan, like the business plan there. So, the space that I'm using is not blocking anyone's, neither any traffic nor any people that walk around or go by. It's completely behind the store, not behind, next to the store, but way far away from the main road or the walking space for the general people. So, I think that if the city allow me to use, that will help me to keep the store open. That will help my, obviously for my family to keep moving. Also, I'm trying to be a part of the community since there isn't many people that I can probably name, hundred of the customer that make comment that when you guys are not here, it was a rough during the winter time, when I really need something, but I don't drive. So, I have to walk all the way to the Market Basket for my needs. So, I think the store is helping the community as well to stay open. So, I, I will request, my humble request to them, to the, to the authority, if I can use that place, space to use the U-Haul will help the city, help the community, also help my family as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, do you have anything to add that's different than the presentation?
No, as my partner here said, we're based on a community, trying to help the community, especially with the college right up the street for, you know, for the less of a carbon footprint. Basically, we just want to make sure that we're supporting the community, supporting Fitchburg, and try to move on from there.
Thank you. Great. Okay, do you want me to go through the course of the application? Great, thank you. Is there anybody here this evening in the audience that is in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that's opposed to this petition? Okay, if you could state your name, come up to the podium and two minutes of information would be great.
Pardon?
I said, two minutes of information would be wonderful.
Okay, I'll try to make it as brief as possible. I personally want to thank the applicant. My name is William Krikorian.
Thank you.
Okay, I live in 196 Bemis Road in Fitchburg. And I own property in Morin Square. And I, that being what it is, as I just started to say a moment ago, I wanted to thank the applicant for having the ambition and desire to come in and take over a vacant building and try to open up a viable business. You know, that being what it is, is commendable and appreciated by other people in the community. The problem I have is that what he's attempting to do or is doing with the U-Haul rental is totally alien to the neighborhood and the community. One of the things I'd like to bring to the attention of the board is the fact, if you already are unaware of it, is this is a historic registered neighbor, a community. It's, Morin Square is registered in the historic register. And anything that needs to be done to any property in that district has to have approval. This was done without approval and does not conform to community standards. I represent his director butler, Matt Fornier, who owns the building next door. Excuse me, getting over a cold. I used to own that building. I bought the building, which was a blighted building, if you people remember correctly. And I started to renovate it, and then I sold it to Matt Fornier. He's done a great job. He's spent an awful lot of money. He's made the building an asset to the community. To my knowledge, I think he spent about $10,000 to put a mural on the side of the building that's now being hidden by U-Haul rental trucks. It's not what should be going on. Directly across the street, the Harper Furniture Project is now a reality. I was the original person who was involved in the conceptual design and development of that project. That building was the catalyst to revitalization of Morin Square. That building is going to help this gentleman's business by the sheer fact that about 100 new people are going to be living there. Further down the road in Morin Square, I have two projects which are approved. One right next to the Rollstone Church, and it's 100 apartments. Another project behind CVS, approved project, 156 apartments. All these projects conform to community standards. I work diligently with boards and committees to make these projects conform to the standards within the community. U-Haul trailers and trucks do not conform to community standards in Morin Square. I humbly ask this board to reject the applicant's desire of special permit application for the U-Haul trailers. It doesn't conform.
Thank you, appreciate it. And sir, your name for the record, please?
My name is Tom Donnelly.
Thank you.
Address is 149 Prospect Street, Fitchburg. I'm really happy that Bill gave you most of my sentiments from the very beginning. I just give you a little history lesson. I came to Fitchburg in 1951 because my father was going to Fitchburg State. So, I lived in the neighborhood in the 50s with my family in the 60s as a college student, in the 70s as an investor. I've owned property there since 1972. I've invested on Lunenburg Street, Myrtle Avenue, North Street, Snow Street, Day Street, and Blossom Street. But when I saw those U-Hauls, I said, I don't think they belong there. How could they do this without? It just doesn't seem right. I just don't think the U-Haul image belongs on Main Street. I mean, we're going to, there's going to be another investor talking about on the other end of Main. People are spending millions of dollars on Main Street, and this is not what the leaders in the city of Fitchburg, to my recollection, are supporting. I mean, when people are investing that much money, I commend them for coming in to run a business, but you have to know what business you want to run and what's going to fit the zoning. So, I'm certainly not in favor of it at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there anybody else in the audience that is in favor of, is against, or just has some general questions regarding this application? Okay, is there anybody virtual?
Yeah, I'm going to note that the commissioner has asked to speak, and we have one attendee. Perhaps we could hear from the attendee first, Mr. Shamps. I am not sure if I need to make you up, I need to allow you to talk. Kathy DeShamps, please state your address for the records, please. And you need to unmute.
I'm sorry, I thought raise hand, I have raised hand.
Okay. I'm going to mute you again then.
Kathy DeShamps, please state.
Mr. Barbadoro. You are welcome to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I was raising my hand to make sure that Mr. DeShamps' hand was noticed and not need to be heard, so I'm sorry.
Then we will move on. There are some communications to be read in to the record. You don't mind my doing that?
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
First, we did have a letter dated February 11th from Reese Larkin Development and John Rodziski. This is the business which operates the Moran Square redevelopment project. Dear Ms. Tree, I am writing to express my opposition to the use variance request for 15 Main Street cited above. My firm recently completed the Moran Square redevelopment project, which included the redevelopment of the Harper Building and the Summer Street Fire Station and the new construction of a five-story building to create 44 units. Skipping down. Although I appreciate the importance of small business owners to the ongoing redevelopment of downtown Fitchburg, the local zoning ordinance and zoning map serves a crucial role in managing development so that it is consistent with community needs. In that light, use variances should be granted sparingly for proposals that provide obvious benefits, that they enjoy widespread support from local stakeholders. In my opinion, the use variance does not rise to the level of a use variance that should be approved. As a use, the renting of vehicles, in particular trucks and vans, is a relatively low economic value use and as such, is inappropriate for an area of Main Street that is considered a gateway to downtown Fitchburg. I note that there are numerous properties near the subject, not located directly on Main Street, which might be more appropriate. We have another letter. This comes from Matthew Fornier, President Elite Construction. This is in a butler letter. Dear Ms. Tree, I am writing to express my opposition to the use variance for 15 Main Street. As a small business owner, he appreciates the importance of small businesses to the ongoing redevelopment of downtown Fitchburg. The use variance should be granted sparingly. In his opinion, the use variance does not rise to the level of the use variance that should be granted. The language in the letter is similar to the last one. So, a letter not in support. And then finally, we have responses on this matter. Board of Health has noted no issue. Thank you, Board of Health. Community Development has made a comment. And that is granting a use variance to allow motor vehicle equipment sales and/or lease within the DB District would create an unfortunate precedent. Also, the recent zoning ordinance overhaul, very deliberately listed N, that means not allowed, for this use within the DB District. Major investment is being made by multiple Morin Square property owners to substantially improve the district and downtown overall. Those ongoing efforts would be harmed by the granting of this use variance. And that is all the correspondence we have on this matter. I'm going to note that Mr. Shamps had her, has her hand up again. If you would like to speak on this matter, please continue. Okay.
I'll have a comment. As a longtime Fitchburg resident, I don't see that that business would be appropriate for downtown Fitchburg.
Thank you, Mr. Shamps.
Thank you.
Can you note your address for Ms. Mata?
I'll have a comment. As a longtime Fitchburg resident, I don't see that that business would be appropriate for downtown Fitchburg. Thank you, Mr. Shamps, and thank you. Can you note your address for Ms. Mata?
You may need to turn your TV down a little bit.
1307 Ring Road.
Thank you very much. I'm going to put you back on mute for now. If you wish to speak again, put your hand up later.
Isn't technology great, folks?
I do have a pile here in relation. We had a building inspector comment with the influx of new residential units in the city of Fitchburg and specifically the Main Street area. A small U-Haul rental business would be beneficial to the community at large, certainly regulate the amount of trucks and trailers. Keep in mind that other businesses at that location have failed in the recent past, and we all benefit from them staying.
I have a building inspector comment with the influx of new...
All right. There are several pictures here that I will pass around of the subject property. They were taken by me, so I know where they come from. Mr. McLaughlin? Mr. Barbadoro? Could you put these pictures, one by one, up on the screen?
Yes, if they're in the file, I'd be happy to. I'll take a quick look.
Thank you. I'll provide commentary. This is on the right side of the building. It shows some unkempt property with cigarettes butts all over the ground. If we could go to a picture? That is trash storage in the rear of the building on the exterior. If we could go to the next picture? That is the parking arrangement right now, showing that parking by employees are associated with the U-Haul is taking place in the handicap parking spots. Next picture? That is the side of the building, I believe. That is Mr. Fornier's building. It is covered in trash. That is the sign advertising the business on Main Street. Next picture? That was the number of trucks parked there this weekend. Next picture? If it's not there... Okay, there. One of the pictures did show on the neighboring building, a certain amount of graffiti. Mr. McLaughlin, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, we're going to go around the board for some comments. And I think I'll start with my right.
All right. Thank you, Michael. I do not have any questions.
No questions. Madam Chair?
I don't think I have any questions of the petitioners at this time, but I, I do appreciate the difficulty of running your own business.
Thank you.
So, you guys are still operating the store?
Yes.
So, the main use of the property is as a business?
As a convenience store, yes.
Right, so the, the use of these trucks is as accessory?
As a supporting for the business.
Are truck rentals commonly associated with convenience stores?
It is not, not directly connected, but a lot of people do that. In Gardner City, I can, I see many places associate that. So, that generates some revenue to run the business, obviously, but not a direct part of the business.
Right, right. It's just one part of what you're offering for sale or rental at this point, right?
Right.
The building next door, it's for sale?
Next door?
Yeah, the building with the mural, is it for sale?
Behind, behind the building, behind my store, I believe.
Next door with the, with the mural? That big empty building that's been there has a big mural that you're blocking?
I don't think it's for sale. I think they, they fixed that, and it's vacant for a, for years, I believe, so far I know.
Okay, so, I last drove by, I thought it was for sale.
It was recently renovated.
Yes, but I thought it was for sale, so it's not going to be mats anymore.
I believe the sign said so.
It's for lease. Okay, all right, so he's going to hold on to it. All right, I don't think I have any further questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you. You, you are asking for a use variance?
Yes, please.
Did you consider asking for a special permit, or that wasn't an option?
I was, I was discussing Mercedes, but I think use variance is as advised, as only option. But if I have an option, definitely I would request for a special permit as well, if I have the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. And then, I, I do have a couple of comments when we get to the board, talking to the board. Well, just in the world of just speaking with the applicants, strongly applaud you guys trying to make the... Well, just in the world of just speaking with the applicants, strongly applaud you guys trying to make the business viable.
I'll say for now, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, sir.
Great. Okay, I don't have any questions, so I guess we could probably take this into deliberation.
Then we're going to close the public hearing at this time. That means we're going to deliberate, but try not to take any comment or ask questions. And we're going to bring this forward to a decision. Mr. Reynolds, would you like to open with your comments?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make the observation that while U-Haul's being, you know, part of a convenience store, my comment may not be an exhaustive list, but just as it-- what comes to mind, I believe it's up on Mechanic Street, and that's not Main Street, just next to what we now might call St. Barnet, St. Camilla's Church. Seems like a very similar type of situation of a gas station, convenience store, U-Haul. Just observationally, just to share that. And I think that if we go around other parts of town, you know, you might find that combination. So I am not in agreement with a use variance on Main Street. That's a sticking point for me. But I really think it's fantastic that people, that business owners are looking to make a viable business. I'm stuck more on the use variance than anything else, which, to my understanding, would be permanent. Is that true, regardless of owner?
That is true. Use variance runs with the land.
Right, and that's my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Shatren?
Sure. So, the table of uses is for principal uses. This isn't the principal use. So, you know, I wouldn't approve a use variance based on that. We do cover accessory use, which is permitted. Truck and trailer washing is permitted, if you can prove it is part of your business. That is a different conversation than we're having today. But I do think that what you're proposing is an accessory use. It's not a change in use.
Mr. Gallagher?
I have nothing to add, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGlaughlin?
Just, you know, to reiterate to the board that it's a use variance under 181-932, and that we have to look at its specific criteria under the use variance in order to make our decision.
Thank you. My commentary, there are very specific criteria for a use variance. And the first one is that there has to be a circumstance related to the soil, shape, or topography of the land, or structures, which especially affects such land or structures, but does not generally affect the zoning district. If you don't meet that criteria, then we are not able to consider granting a use variance. And nothing in the discussion today, or in my examination of the property, says that there is any issue related to those four items. So I will, I will say that I am also not inclined, simply because it does, it does not and cannot, by anything that's been shown, meet those very specific criteria for a use variance. In addition, I appreciate the initiative of attempting to generate more income, to keep the business going. I also agree that the influx of residents is going to contribute to the success of your business at that location in the near future, and very much hope that it does so. I do want you to take better care of that property. There's a lot of trash there right now.
I'm going to take care of that someone--
I appreciate that.
--also, like, it was snow on the side, so it's some of the stuff and under the snow that I didn't realize. That's all messed up. I'll take care of that by tomorrow morning.
Yeah. So I appreciate that. I think it's good for not only the downtown, but also for your business, to keep the property clean. That being said, if there was another form of relief, or something that was allowable by this board, I'd certainly be willing to consider it. But my feeling in general is that this is not allowable, because it does not meet that very specific use variance criteria. That being my comment, I'm going to ask for a motion in the affirmative from this board.
Okay, I will make the motion under ZBA 2023-04 for the request of a use variance from Magliser Rahman at 15 Main Street, as requested.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of granting the use variance? All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously opposed. The request is denied, but I do wish you very good luck with your business. If there is something that can add to your business that we can grant, please feel free to approach the board again, okay? Thank you for coming this evening. I realize that there are a number of people here tonight for 1341 Ringe, or at least that's what I think is going on. I'm just going to note, we have three matters before we get to that matter, one of which I expect to be a continuance. We are going to take a five-minute recess. Please feel free to use facilities or use your legs. We'll be back in five minutes. We're bringing this meeting back into order. I'd like to welcome everybody back to the ZBA meeting, and thank you all for spending a great Valentine's Day with us. The next matter, and again, just to remind everybody, I know that there are a lot of people here for 1341 Ringe Road. We do need to take the matters before that first. There are three. We will get to this as quickly as possible. I appreciate everyone coming here and participating in the meeting, and participating in local government. The next matter before us is ZBA 2023-05. That is 157 High Street. This is a request for a special permit under Section 181.94 of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to reinstate the additional two vacant units to continue the use of a three-family dwelling pursuant to Section 181.336, located in the residential C District. Welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address each.
Martha Sanche, 157 High Street.
Thank you and welcome.
My name is Francisco Lopez. I'm her son. I live in Tampa, Florida.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. I am, I need to let you both know, this matter has come before us after a previous denial. That denial took place less than two years ago. And I'm just trying to get to the-- the denial was entered before the clerk on December 8th of 2021. When there has been a request that has been denied by the board, and you want to come back and ask us for the same relief again, before two years have gone up, we have to make very specific findings on it, and agree that the matter can come before us again. And the planning board must do the same. If both of the-- until both of those things happen, we can't hear the substantive request before us. So I'm going to just make sure you understand what we need to find. And if anybody is interested, this is under Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 16. We need to find by a vote of at least four of the five members that specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action, the previous denial was based, have occurred. So can you tell us, because the prior request, it was to reinstate three units of a four-family building? How has that undergone a specific and material change since 2021?
Pardon me if I don't have all the terms right. This building is existed, well, besides the fire, you know, you should have records that there was a fire. After the fire, we had insurance claimed, or for the insurance, they gave us the money. We lost the money. Contractors stole the money. Back to this date, she's finished the apartment building on her own. But they're saying we don't have enough parking. But this building's been there for 100 years, and this is not a throwaway, an active street. There's just two buildings there, hers and the building next door. And the neighbor gave us a letter that the parking is not an issue for her. The parking that we always had is the one that we've always had. And the building has no more property. So we maintain the street, we main-- between we, the neighbors and I, and my mother, they maintain the property. So there, there really hasn't been any change to the, to the building or anything. We just, no four of ours, we've had delays after delays in trying to put this together when we lost the money. So we're just trying to make it a one-family. It was a three, three-family and an efficiency. They took the efficiency off. If they take the other units off, as expensive as it is, she won't be able to pay the bills for this huge building that now has to convert into one family. But the parking situation, it's been the same parking situation since the building was built, and it's still the same situation now, and they've managed well.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Is there any person in the audience who would like to comment on this petition? Seeing none, and seeing Commissioner Barbadoro with his hand up. Mr. Barbadoro, if you would like to comment, please do so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like the applicant to come to the Building Department in the morning so that I can explain to them what they're going to need to do in terms of their parking if they want to use this building for anything other than one of the units in the building. And I will also be happy to explain to the applicant why you need to follow these, the regulations for parking now, when you did not have to do so when the building was built. There has been a change in circumstances, and the parking regulations need to, need to be complied with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Did you have anything else you wanted to add before I go to the board?
Well, it's just, again, an observation. I see that he's talking about new rules, but this is not new construction, and this is not a fight with him or anybody. It's just that there, we, we-- if we had another property that we could develop into a parking lot, then this would have been an option, even if it cost us. But there is no more land, and this has always been this way. So they say that the building was abandoned. In our eyes, it was never abandoned. We're just having struggles to put it together, and it took all this time to put it together. We paid our taxes, we've done everything in our side, the way we manage money and the way we put it together. So this is, you know, now we're almost done, and now we have this other hurdle that we have to run over or try to manage.
Thank you, sir. I am going to turn it over to any board questions now. I'm just going to note that we are a board that is required to follow the ordinances and the statutes that we have. But I do know that you have undergone a number of hardships, and I certainly do have sympathy for the situation that you're in. Mr. Reynolds, any questions?
What-- I'd like to understand how much parking spaces are needed for the request. And I'd also like to understand clarity whether this is a four-unit or a three-unit request.
So, I received an application for a three-unit request. And I think it remains a request for there to be three units.
So three units. So what's the parking necessary for three units?
That would be six spaces, assuming at least two bedrooms. But the question before us at this point in time, before we can reach any substance, is whether there's been a specific and material change since the previous denial.
And what was the previous denial based on?
It was--
And I appreciate that if my questions are out of sequence, and you want me to ask these questions later, I'm happy to hold them.
I'll just read, "The board agrees that due to the lack of parking plan in the onsite observation from the board members, the lot does not have adequate parking to serve the structure and requested use."
Madam Chair, may I add something?
Of course.
At that point, there wasn't a certified plot plan. The applicant has provided, we're now with five parking spots on that plan.
Thank you.
So if, from my perspective, I feel like I'm in the territory of more deliberation than I am questions. So I'm going to hold.
Thank you. Mr. Shatren, any questions for the petitioner?
No, I'm familiar with the property, and I don't think I have any questions.
Mr. Gallagher, any further questions for the petitioner?
I do not. I viewed the site today, and I spoke to the partitionist son. I asked him about a snow plan, where to put the snow. And there seems to be additional, enough land on the side to actually plow the snow from the front of the building to the back of the building. It's currently where the dumpster is. I'm just questioning the property line, looking at the certified plot plan. I'm a little bit perplexed as to where the property line actually is. And where it is a certified plot plan, I'm wondering if the spots are within the 18 by 9 regulation. I did note today, when I was out at the site, there were four cars parked quite comfortably in front of the building. They were smaller, compact cars, granted, but it looked to be a decent parking situation.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that during one of the-- this has been going on for quite some years, right?
2015.
Yeah, and I, and if I can recall correctly, the board made some concessions to allow you to renovate the top floor, correct?
No, to use the top floor, because the top floor was in damage.
Okay. And then, for safety concerns, there were some concessions made to allow the rest of the building interior to be sheet rocked, correctly?
Correct, because after, I'm sorry, after the fire, then--
It was gutted or something, right?
Well, they had to-- the insurance said that we had to put new electrical.
Okay.
So then they paid, they gave money for that. And that was part of the money that was absconded. But yeah, so then they started taking walls out, or not walls, drywall, to run the wires. And that's where it, the second, first and second weren't inhabitable because the drywall was down.
Okay, thank you. So at this point today, the first and the second floor, what condition are they in?
First and second are done.
Done as in?
Inspected, and plumbing and electrical is done and painted. There's a little bit of door work that has to be done, but they're finished.
Okay.
I think the commissioner has his hand up. It would be appropriate...
That'd be great. That would help answer my question.
Mr. Commissioner, you're welcome to speak.
Thank you. So just, I would like to shed a little light on a couple of items. Just to begin with, the plot plan that was provided. The, the boundary lines of the lot are hard to read on the plot plan. And the parking that is laid out on the, on the plot plan actually overlaps the abutting property's land. And when I saw it, I called up the surveyor, and I asked him if what I saw was correct. And he said, yes, the parking is partially on the abutting property. I'm talking about the five spaces laid out at the front of the building. There's a sixth space that is behind the building, and I believe that is wholly on someone else's property. So the parking that is there is not compliant. I have, regarding the inside of the building, Mr. McLaughlin's recollection was correct. It would have been an unsafe condition to leave unsafe wiring and walls under, without drywall. A lot of people don't know that drywall greatly slows down fire. And we've seen a couple examples of partially gutted buildings that go up like kindling. So as a condition, I had requested that the, all of the building be drywalled. The applicant did not realize, or I assume did not realize, that they were not supposed to finish the units. The units are not, have not received their final inspection, and there is no certificate of occupancy for those units. So those units are not supposed to be used. And right now, until, unless and until the board gives them permission to use those units in the form of a special permit, those units are supposed to remain vacant. Thanks.
Commissioner, were permits pulled for the work?
Yes, permits were pulled.
For the plumbing?
Yes, and for the electrical.
And they're, and they're vacant at the moment.
I'm just going to add to the record. The Board of Health made a comment on this property that they don't have a complaint. However, more attention from the owner at maintaining the curb free of trash and bulk items needs to happen. There's a TV and mattress along the stone wall currently.
We, we didn't know we were having an inspection. The gentleman came by. But we have a dumpster which we regularly kind of has trash. We have the unit that's, that was the third, the three-family, and then we have the efficiency. That's where we're putting the trash, and we take it out as we get the dumpster, and we put it in there. And in the springtime, we plan to clear all that. So because we have a TV or a microwave, something there, it's because we're trying to get a couple items together to take it over there as, as money frees up.
Thank you. You know, my response is that it's your, it's your obligation to keep your property free of debris, whether or not there's an inspector coming. And if you do have, if you do have bulk items that need to be removed, they should be stored in a way that's not visible from the street. That being said, I am ready to close the public hearing. We, again, are not voting at this point on the special permit. We need to vote on whether to reconsider. And then the planning board, if, if that is approved, is also going to need to vote on reconsideration before this matter can come before our board again. Again, the standard is that four out of the five members vote that there be specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the previous denial was based. I am going to look for deliberation from the board. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you. It seems to me that the, whether the certified plot plan rises to the level of sufficient, that's a, an avenue I would be willing to take. I am listening to the building commissioner saying that they would like to get a, a parking plan laid out. That's an avenue that I'd be willing to take. And I am hopeful that these avenues can be taken to move forward. Because I think it's reasonable to progress and finish this building. And I think that would benefit the city.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chartrand, any comment?
Yeah. When was the last hearing?
September 2021.
September 2021. December.
Yep.
You know, for me, I don't think it's any different than the last one. That's all I can say. It's exactly the same. They want to reinstate the three-family. If that is an accurate plot plan, there, there won't be any parking, and that's that.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, the reason, although I wasn't here in September of 2021 for that particular hearing, the reason was for the parking. And again, whether this parking plan that has been presented, this certified plan, is actually valid is still, doesn't look to be valid. But I'd like clarification on it to move forward.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess there's, there's two things here, right? If the question is, is this application substantially different than the original? Based on all the information, no, it isn't. If the board at some point looks at this project, or it's reapplied, or if it decides it wants to move ahead, this registered stamped parking plan is very unclear. There is no delineation on property bounds. I was talking with my fellow commissioner, and we, we were making assumptions as to where it is. But if where we think it is, there is no parking. So there, there are some serious hurdles to overcome. I would want to see a plan that shows proposed parking on the applicant's property or some easements or changes made where the abutting property is going to allow for this long-term. Because we all know these, both properties won't be held in its existing ownership forever. Thank you.
Thank you. For my comment, I, I do not see that this is substantially different. The parking is still a problem. I appreciate the plan, but it doesn't show conforming parking. For this to be different, and this is actually something that can be worked on, I would need to see an easement for that parking from the neighbor so that the knees, the neighbor grants permission in perpetuity for that parking to occur. And, but again, having some sympathy for the situation that you are in, I'd be inclined to favor a vote which allows the waiver of the fee once the two years are up, or if there is that easement to show a substantial change in the application. That being said, I'd, I'd like to take a motion in the affirmative that a specific and material change in conditions has occurred since the previous denial. Would someone undertake that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So that fails one to four. I am also interested if anybody would like to make a motion that the application fee may be waived for this applicant.
So moved?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. So sir and ma'am, I, I do hope that there is a resolution. Again, the direction is you need to have legal permission in the form of an easement for the parking spaces so that the parking is located on land that you have permission, you know, to park on. If you can obtain that, I have indicated that I would reconsider the petition before the two years is up. I wish you very good luck. And the building commissioner has asked that you come see him, and he's going to provide you with some assistance. The hearing is over, sir. The hearing is over. Thank you very much. The next matter before us is ZBA 2023-06 for 220 to 222 Clarence, Clarence Street. This is a special permit. I am going to note that the applicant has graced us with a continuance. So that means they pass on to the next matter. She has signed a continuance agreement to the meeting date of March 14th, 2023. I am looking for a motion to so continue.
So moved?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Continued to March 14th. Next matter before us is ZBA 2023-07, 1146 Main Street. This is a request for a use variance under Section 181.93 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to use the third floor level as a self-storage warehouse pursuant to Section 181.313, located in the downtown business district map 17, block 65, lot 0. Is the applicant here? Just going to check virtually. I do not see the applicant present. Do we have any communication from the applicant? Mr. Commissioner, would you like to speak on this case?
Yes, Madam Chair. You and I, well, I received a communication from Attorney Flick, and I, and you may have as well, but it may not have gotten to you. And he had requested a withdrawal because there is a variance for, for the building. So the variance said that the building could be used for storage. And it was acted upon, obviously, because it is, you know, several floors in the building are currently being used as storage. So I felt, and he felt, that a, there is, first of all, I don't think there's any relief by special permit for this application. But secondly, a variance was obtained, and there would be no need for any further relief from the ZBA.
Okay. I have just been handed that letter. I did not see it before. Thank you for bringing it to my attention. So the applicant has asked for leave to withdraw without prejudice. Is there a motion on that?
So moved?
Any seconds?
Second?
Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion to withdraw without prejudice is passed. Now, we move on to...
The main event.
The main event for this evening. So we have three cases before us. ZBA 2023-04, ZBA 2022-35, and ZBA 2022-36.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Reynolds?
Just administrative point would be that this seems to be the second ZBA 2003-04 that we have this evening. And I just want to recognize that this one is different than the matter that we saw at 6:45.
Thank you. I appreciate your pointing that out. The other matter was 15 Main Street. This, this is 1341 Ringe Road. We may need to renumber the application since there are duplicate numbers. If the...
As, as, as printed, maybe it's not in the background. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. At any rate, I believe this is an administrative matter that a petitioner doesn't have any concern about. We can move forward to amend administratively. Yes, Mr. McLaughlin?
Just kind of questioning the fact that we're hearing, what are we going to call this, number this case, 2023-? For the record, 08?
For the record, let's call it 08.
No, I have 08.
You have 08?
I have 08.
I'm going to make a, I think we should just pause and ask what's, what's a good number? Because I think 08 might be taken.
So regardless of the number, my, my question is, why aren't we hearing 2022, 35, and 36 before this?
I am not inclined to do that. I am inclined to take these out of order, take the appeals first, and take the request for the special permit afterwards.
So you are inclined to take them out of order?
I am inclined to take them out of order. The last matter is scheduled for 8:15. We have certainly passed the time period for that to occur. So I don't see any issue with that being the case. At the last meeting, we had very active public comment, which appreciated, on these two appeals. And I did pass back some questions that have received an answer from Attorney Para. And I just want to thank, I, I recognize that it took a substantial amount of time to produce the response that was given. And it's very much appreciated that you did put that effort into the response. It did bring several items to light for, for me. At the last hearing, I did call for a close, and I did promise the petitioner that I would allow a chance for a response. So if you can, please go ahead. And we have two matters here. One is the appeal to overrule the building commissioner's cease and desist order to expand the lawfully pre-existing nonconforming mobile home park requiring a special permit in rural residential. And the second, the same appeal to override the cease and desist order for earth removal, requiring a special permit. order for earth removal, requiring a special permit. Counsel, please feel free to proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Alex Para, representing the petitioner tonight. With me is Joanne McGurn. So, and thank you for your comment regarding the response. As I think you probably know, we had made a significant effort with public records requests to find all the information that you had requested in your written questions. I think one of the takeaways from that is that many of the records that you would normally expect to find directly answering the questions that you had asked seemingly don't exist or have been lost, difficult to find. And so, we tried to put together the record for you in the best way that we could, and so with that as a backdrop, I think the salient points that you had asked us to respond to really start with the question of, you know, was there a constructive approval and what was constructively approved? And unlike the case the chair had cited, we have the situation here where the city clerk has issued and issued not only the certificate of no appeal, but the documentation that went on record at the registry of deeds certifying the existence of a constructive approval. We then provided to you some minutes of the planning board from 2006, together with the plan that was in front of the planning board in 2006, with, and the earliest version of the plan that we could find was the 2006 plan mentioned by the planning board with one revision date shortly after the issuance of the constructive approval, and on the plan, it tells you what was revised. What they were doing was responding to peer review comments with respect to the application for an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and some peer review comments from the city's consultants. So there are no revisions noted on the plan other than those, and what that plan showed, and what we deemed to be the constructive approval, was a total of 46 units, 17 of which were pre-existing, and 29 were proposed to be new. So with that said, we come approximately three years later, and there's an application in front of the planning board to amend the plan and asking for a determination by the planning board that the proposed amendment to increase the number of units from 46 to 54, in other words, an additional eight units, could be approved. I would use the term as a red line change. I think your zoning ordinance talks about it in terms of whether it's substantive or not, but it does, your zoning ordinance provides the planning board with the authority to make that determination. We provided minutes, the planning board approved the change as a non-substantive change. I recognize that the written comments, the written questions of the board characterized it as a substantive change that may not have been permissible under the zoning ordinance, but that determination, I would respectfully submit in this case, was for the planning board to make. They made the determination that we didn't need to apply for an amendment of the special permit, and they approved the change as non-substantive. I don't want to get into a discussion about whether that was right or wrong, but I would point out that that vintage plan, it's the same road layout, same utility layout, it's the addition, it is the addition of eight units, but in terms of the development plan overall, it wasn't an unreasonable decision for the planning board to characterize that as a non-substantive change. So one of the other questions that the board had asked, and I'll just phrase it in terms of an overall, you know, statement was, you know, what happened to the appellate rights of the Butters? And so, on the first, on the constructive approval, I, you know, clearly, the notice described at least substantively what the relief was that was provided in terms of what the development would be and where it would be. And actually, historically, you look back, this was well-publicized, well-attended meetings. You look at the planning board minutes, and so that notice of constructive approval, the issuance of the certificate by the city clerk is no different than any other special permit. You know, Butters or parties in interest could well have appealed that. I think there was plenty of notice in respect of that. And with respect to the planning board's decision to increase or permit the increase in the number of units to 54, that was not a public hearing. It was not advertised, but this development has not been occurring in secret. It's plain for parties in interest to see. It's been going on for many years, and even if you say, and I'm just referring back to some of the recent cases now on appellate rights, even if you say there was a complete failure of notice at the time that the planning board rendered its decision on the 54 units, certainly people have been aware since then of what's going on at the project, and having become aware could have exercised appellate rights. So I think that was the thrust, a major thrust of the questions that the board had. I would just say, as an aside here, you know, part of the argument that we've made to the board is that the 2006 decision of the building commissioner that this could be permitted as a planned unit development, and we provided some authority that that decision was binding, but in a sense, it really doesn't matter, because it became part of and incorporated in the planning board's special permit back in 2006. So whether you say that determination was binding or not, you know, it doesn't matter if you think that there was a special permit issued in 2006 based on that and no appeal has been issued. So I don't know if there's anything else you want me to address in your written questions, but I think we come back to, full circle here, is good, bad, indifferent, right, wrong. A special permit was issued for this project. It was exercised, and we provided some case references for you in our response. It was exercised within three years. The permit vested was exercised, you know, in a very considerable way, in that the applicant went forward with application and obtaining a permit to extend the sewer to the project, went forward, obtained an order of conditions, all steps necessary to exercise the special permit that had been granted. So we come back to the position that, and I appreciate that some may question whether the planning board was right or not in 2006, whether it was right or not in 2009, that it did in fact issue a special permit, and it's not been appealed, and that is binding on the city to permit the project to go forward. That's our basic position.
Thank you very much, Counsel. Again, we have many people here. I am going to take public comment. I am going to ask that you limit your comment to two minutes or less. I am going to ask that you not be repetitive of other people's comments so that this matter may progress tonight. Is anybody here who would like to make a comment? If you do, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and make your comment, and thank you for coming.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could just respectfully ask, this is going to be a long meeting, that anybody that spoke at the last meeting...
I did not.
...if they're going to speak again to have new information and not repeat what they had stated last.
I think that's a reasonable request.
I did not speak at the last.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
My name's George McGee. I live at 157 Nigel Court in Pittsburgh. I've been in Pittsburgh now since September. I am right in the heart of, you could say, the area that is in question about that she cannot remove any more dirt or whatever from this area. That was a cease and desist order, as I understand it. Here's the problem with that. You can't leave it like that. It's impossible. I mean, if you tell her she cannot build another home, so be it, but all this piles and piles of dirt have to go. It's, you know, it's not attractive at all. I'm sure, you wouldn't like to look at piles of dirt every morning, but I do, you know, and, you know, and I really don't understand what the problem is and why she can't have this, have these trucks removing it, but that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir. At this time, I'm just going to, for the purposes of gathering gross information, if you are here in support of this petition, please raise your hand. Thank you. And if you're here in opposition, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. If anyone else would like to come to the podium, please approach. Sir, please approach. Name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Mark Christian. I live at 71 Bennett Road, and I've been a resident there for 28 years. In 2005, the trailer park expansion was voted down by the zoning board. However, the planning board did not act within the deadline with their decision. This failure to act allowed a special permit to be granted automatically because the city failed to comply. As stated at a planning board meeting, a public meeting on January 2010, Woodland Estates proposed an additional eight units from 44 to 52. I would like to point out that this agenda was under other business and not a public meeting. In addition, the eight homes were considered a minor modification by the planning board and voted by the public meeting was not necessary. So 13 years later, they have not completed the original 44 units. 13 years of additional jackhammering, blasting, and excavating was considered a minor modification. Minutes back from 2006, Attorney Madanza presented a proposal expanding the park from 17 to 45 units, about two units per acre. Presently, there are 41 on a 17-acre parcel minus the road, cul-de-sac, retention pond, and wetland replication. I don't understand that math. On April 22nd of this, on April 2022, the planning board meeting gave a three-year extension, which was granted with many conditions. Not being happy with the board's decision, I asked Mr. O'Hara, and he explained that I had 20 days to appeal this decision after it was recorded at the city clerk's office. This decision has still not been recorded as of last Friday, February 10th, so yes, we were denied an appeal. In closing, I would like to just, what I would like to see happen is some sort of compromise on the number of units and a hard deadline on the completion. I don't expect any decisions tonight, but I would like the people of Woodland Estates to understand the scope of the cease and desist, and I feel they have been given inaccurate data, and their anger is fueled by misinformation, and I am sure that they're uncomfortable asking their questions on this open forum. We are all very passionate about what we call home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, I'm just going to pause for a moment. Counselor Fleming is online asking to talk, so I'm just going to allow her to speak and then you. Counselor Fleming, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. First of all, I need to begin by apologizing to the residents of Woodland Estates. It had totally escaped my memory that Lauralee McClure did contact me a while back regarding this issue. Thankfully, I was able to meet with many of these residents and clear up a few things regarding my comments at the last meeting, which would have been in December. What I want to make clear this evening is that my goals for both the Butters and the Woodland Estate residents are the same, and that is to finish this project and get peace and quiet back to this rural residential neighborhood. High up, all the loose ends for these residents, finishing the paving, the landscaping, whatever unsightly dirt there is there, and whatever else they were promised. But with that being said, I believe that these residents have been promised things that were never really on the plans, after speaking to many of them. My heart went out to a lot of them because I believe that they think that the cease and desist means that all the other work that has to be finished is not going to get done. They had promised a recreation area. They had promised many things that really, well, not on the original plan, so I'd like to see this project get finished. I mean, 16 years is too far. If she's allowed to put more units, give her a timeframe of a year or two and be done with it, because everybody needs peace at this point. 16 years is far too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fleming. Sir, please approach. State your name and address. Comments, approximately two minute, please.
I'm Hal Malanson, trustee of 13 Bennett Road. My 91-year-old mom still lives at that address. Madam Chair, board members, earlier tonight, you considered emotional support. I'm begging for some emotional support for the neighbors. Some 16, 17 years ago, Douglas Caves and I attended a planning board meeting along with other neighbors like my father, John Heschin, Vako Papouti, to name a few. At that time... At that time, every one of the abudders were opposed to the size and scope of this development. We were ignored. All of the gentlemen mentioned lived their final days listening to relentless hammer drilling and blasting. It was just relentless for years. I recall my father stating that this excavation is absurd because of the, the entire site is solid ledge. There's no way they can do this in a reasonable manner because of the ledge. Well, little did he know that they could blow the top off the mountain and relentlessly hammer and blast and process the material for another 15 years. It's not dirt. It's rock. At a recent planning board meeting, I asked how much material had been taken off the site. Joanne answered the planning board by saying no material had been taken off-site. When challenged, she admitted that some material had previously been taken off-site. The following day, Doug Caves followed a truck loaded with material from the site all the way to a site in Groton, and it was dumped at another development. The next day, Mark Christian and I followed a truck to Ridmore off Benson Street and watched it being dumped. Joanne has been operating a quarry processing material with total disregard to the neighbors. They are proposing a total of 2,520,000 cubic feet of material processed in all. If you go to Crocker Field, the football field, times five stories high, is, is, is the height of the mound that has been blasted, blasted, hammer drilled, and loaded in overweight vehicles going over the bridge on the bottom of Ringe Road, absolutely overweight, for years, for 17 years.
Thank you, sir. Could you sum up your comments?
Yes.
Your time is...
Yes. At the last zoning board meeting of appeals, Joanne uttered the quote, "There has never been any controversy here." Let me make this clear. There has been controversy since day one, absolutely since day one of excavation, there has been controversy. Please stop this quarry operation in total disturbance of the otherwise peaceful neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Sir, please approach. Again, state your name and address and approximately two minutes.
My name's Peter Berger. I live at 114 Nigel Court since 2020. The planning board came up with an ending dig. What's holding up the project now is the city of Pittsburgh. You know, when you think about that, you know, all went along, they could have kept on working. You know, I worked construction my whole life, and it was a great winter to get work done. More than likely, most of the heavy construction would have been done by this summer, you know? Then it would have got a lot quieter. The quality of the work that Vandal Construction does is very, very good. You know, I've looked at what they do, and they do some of the better work than I've ever seen. You know, so I just hopefully, you do come to agreement. I know what comes up about the material being hauled out, but when you engineer a plan, you always got to meet the grades, and that's always been the issue. And that's the only way you can meet the grades and make sure the water flows right and everything. And, you know, there is a water problem that comes in off the abudders', you know, land, basically, and there is a plan where it comes down, runs through the park, and goes into the retention pond. But hopefully, we come to an agreement real fast. So that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. I am inclined to take one more comment from the against side and one more from the for Please approach, sir. State your name and address, approximately two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Douglas Caves. I live at 1345 Ringe Road, and I would just like to say a few words. I also supplied photos earlier this morning to the board. I don't know if those are available, but these photos indicate the absence of adequate screening that has been provided by the applicant and indicates the proximity of the dwellings overlooking my backyard. I am indeed in abuddah, as the photos will indicate. As I stated in the ZBA hearing regarding the appeal on the cease and desist order two months ago, the ongoing noise pollution caused by the blasting and rock splitting has been an unusual and oppressive presence in our lives for over a decade now. In addition, the lack of adequate screening as required between properties should be addressed by the owner, and that should be done sooner, not later. This project has far exceeded the neighborhood's expectation of what a reasonable time to conclude a development project should be, especially for an expansion of the pre-existing non-conforming use. So though there is much that can be questioned about the processes that led to this point, from a pragmatic point of view, I hope the project comes to completion and the neighborhood is allowed to resume its rural appeal without disruption as soon as is possible. So if this project is to continue, I would like to see an enforceable end date not to exceed six months, hence, from this date, and assigned to it, assigned to, you know, assigned to the project, and that includes a, a, a limit to further expansion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your confining the comments to the time. Yes, you're welcome to approach, sir. Please state your name and address.
My name is Alan Wesley, and I've lived in this park for over 50 years.
Can you state your specific address, sir? The number?
66 Nigel.
Your address, sir?
Your address. She just wants your address. 66...
66 Nigel Court.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Obviously, I mean, I guess the phase one stuff right there, but what wants to be finished is the, the last phase, and I think a lot of stuff, why they have stopped a lot of this stuff is for the people that have already up in the, towards the end right there, it's, you know, right now, it's a mud hole because it's not able to continue on. And like I said, I've, I've seen over the last 50 years, I've seen a lot of changes in the park. And as far as I'm concerned, a lot of it's been all the time real good. It's just advancement on some things right here. It makes affordable, affordable housing for a lot of people. The units are, what makes it good is one, one floor, instead of going down to the basement on some houses or like that, or going, you know, to the second story. And also, I think for safety on a lot of the people, I've seen a lot of people obviously for walking, walking around in the park. Over the years, I've seen some of the neighbors come up and walk in the park because it was much safer for them, obviously, to, to be on Ringe Road, where the car is going. You know, all we really want to do, I'm sure all the members that are there just want to see this finished so that we can get on with our lives and, and continue and enjoy the, the beauty of the park.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Mr. Commissioner, you have a comment to make. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of comments. One is, I would request that the chair discover if the applicant has ever modified their construction general permit with DEP. The applicant has stated that there have been modifications made through the years, adding additional units to the project, and I'm just curious if the stormwater management requirements, but construction permit has been modified. Secondly, the applicant has mentioned that a constructive grant was granted by the planning board for a planned unit development subdivision, and I have no comment on whether that is valid or not valid, but I would say that Section 6 of 40A states that pre-existing non-conforming structures may be extended or altered, provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit granting authority or the special permit granting authority designated by ordinance or bylaw that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be more substantially detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. So I would just submit that in my personal opinion, Section 9 of 40A does not supplant Section 6, which is the reason why I said you need a special permit to extend the pre-existing non-conforming trailer park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. The city solicitor has joined us. Do you wish to make any comment?
No, no, thank you, Madam Chair.
Comments from the Board of, Board of Health, need dust control and noise control plan. Portable toilets need to be on-site. And that is the only comment we have. At this point in time, do you have a response to the question from the building commissioner on the modification of the DEP permit?
The additional units have not been built yet or constructed, so the modifications that have occurred have been, I think, solely in respect of the order of conditions in front of the Conservation Commission. Could I just momentarily address a couple of the comments that were made?
Briefly, within about five minutes?
I, I hope it's less than that. What I heard tonight, both from residents and parties and interests who have spoken in opposition, is they want to get the project done, they want it over with. And I can assure you that that is fervently Joanne's wish to get it done. You know, when we address the special permit application, I'll go into a little bit more detail, but it isn't that far off. And so I think, you know, we've stated our position in respect of the appeals. I would just note that, you know, much of the material has been excavated and is processed and waiting on-site to be removed. We provided you with a calculation that shows that, just based on the units going forward, that 8,711 cubic yards could be removed as a matter of right. And if nothing else, you know, transpires tonight, it would be good to get that process underway and get the, the material that's been processed and stockpiled out of there. It will accelerate the completion of the project. That's all that I had on these appeals.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I am going to ask board members if they had any questions of the applicant, and then we will move to close the hearing. Mr. Reynolds, do you have any questions?
Yeah, the special permit tonight makes reference to a certain number of units. In the applicant, you were explaining a little bit of the journey of how many were existed, how many were added. They got us to four, I think, I believe you said 46, and then there was another eight added. So is, is the special permit tonight, 13, in addition to the 54 that you mentioned? Or is, I'm just trying to figure out, what, what, what are we trying to vote on?
Well, I understood from the chair that we were proceeding first with the appeals. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so I, I do have some plan, just some charts.
So my question would be, could you explain the...
Yeah. So the purpose of this chalk plan is, is really to show you what has not been completed of the approved 54 units. And so within the crosshatched, the red crosshatch area, you'll see some units that have been shaded in sort of an orange color. There are 13 units. Those are the units that have not been installed to date. Everything else, all the remaining units are in, and with respect to the roadway itself, you'll see there's a section of the roadway that's sort of shaded in pink color. And so the roadway is complete up to the pink shading, which is Station 8 plus 00. And you'll see there's some, shown on the plan is some drainage that's been installed. The roadway is graded out and complete to that point, although there's paving that needs to be done. The paving couldn't be done in that very last section because the sewer laterals need to be installed before the paving can occur, but it is degraded. And then if you're heading up towards the cul-de-sac, on the left-hand side, the first three or four yellow-shaded units that have not been installed, that's where the material that's been processed is presently being stockpiled, but underneath that, it's essentially to grade. It's a little bit more to be done. So you can see that the, the bulk of this project has been completed. The two orange-shaded structures closer to Ringe Road, the larger one is the right center, and the smaller one is a unit for which, one of the old units that was existing, for which a demolition permit has been issued, but no building permit has been issued to replace it.
So on the northern side, the red-hatched, yellow units are all to grade?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, on the northern side?
On, on this side here, oh, I might have...
Yeah.
Right in here, this section, like, we blasted this whole area, and this section just has materials placed on it.
But, but below that, is it already...
It's already been blasted. It's all set to go, and then we just got to run the utilities across once we move the material.
The side of the street?
The other, the side of the street where the homes are, is, and then there's one more home site that we have material, actually, three home sites we have material sitting on.
And are these yellow home sites also to grade, or is there more? Or is there more?
They're close, but they're not exactly there. We do have to blast a little in this section. That's what I was hoping to get done this winter.
Okay, so the blasting left to go is at the...
About the last two. You got the cul-de-sac area, and then there's like two homes on each side?
Understood, thank you for that clarity. And then down the bottom, the other...
This is an existing home?
Relative to whether or not they're at grade, the two, one...
Oh, yeah, everything's done, yeah.
Okay. So the only excavation left to go is...
Is just the back section.
In your given good construction conditions, what's your estimate of how long that would take?
To finish the rest of the project?
The excavation.
Well, first, we have to blast it, and then we have to process it, so it's going to be a good...
Okay, so blasting and processing would take something like...
It'd be at least a six-month period.
Thank you. And when we look at the special permit, if, when we talk about 13 units, that's not adding any more to what we're looking at in today's plan?
No, that's all part of the original approved plan.
All in total 54 units.
Yep, and the recreational building, which would be a total of 55 structures.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shartan?
I think he covered all of my questions, so...
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, I'd like to ask the applicant, how long do you need to finish this project going forward?
At least two years.
Please no comments.
We had everything lined up, and then we had the cease and desist orders. We were trying to finish to get in as much of the utilities, and we had the blasting, which would have been done by now. But everything came to a halt. I finally had everything going, you know, and we were really pushing because we had a deadline that was set by planning and conservation of December 31, 2024, and I was trying to meet or exceed that. And, you know, I don't want to promise something I can't deliver. I'm doing everything I can out there. But again, we had really good momentum, and then we were shut down.
So is two years a maximum estimate?
I think it's a realistic estimate.
Realistic, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Obviously, if I can do it sooner, I want it done just as bad, well, I think just as bad as the neighbors do.
Okay, yeah, understandable. Thank you.
Mr. McGloughlin?
Madam Chair, thank you. To the petitioner and its representation, just need some help with timelines and some Been on this board a long time because I remember this case being before the zoning board, which it was denied, went before the planning board, and what was the application? Was it a planned unit development?
I don't remember. I just know the first time we came in, we were looking for like 75 or 100 units when Whitman and Bingham had done the design, which was...
So, yeah, let me answer. The planning board application that was, was actually, there was a vote, planning board vote to approve it. The constructive approval resulted as the fact that they didn't...
Yes, I get that part. My question is, what was applied for? Do you have any documentation?
Well, the, as I think, you know, the written questions and the documentation pointed out, there is a reference in the constructive approval to the planned unit development provisions of the bylaw, and on top of that, there was, in the minutes of the planning board back in 2006, the vote, the motion on the vote to approve the project was conditioned upon the building commissioner at that time rendering opinion that the project was permissible as a planned unit development. And then, so the constructive approval occurs, I believe it's September 20 or thereabouts of 2006, and a few days later, the building commissioner issues his determination that, in fact, the project is permissible as a planned unit development. So from that, I infer, and I totally acknowledge that the records are not perfect, but from that, I infer that the planning board approved it as a planned unit development.
So the applicant doesn't have a copy of the plan that was attached to the notice of the constructive grant?
We have a copy of the plan, which is dated May of 2006, which the planning board referenced in its minutes as being the plan in front of it, with one revision. And the revision is a December revision, and, you know, on the blocks of the plans, it's, you know, it has a revision date, and then it has a summary of what the revision was about.
Was it a PUD plan?
I don't believe that the title of the plan references a PUD. It says Woodland Estates Site Development Plans in Fitchburg, Mass., okay? It does not, the plan itself does not specifically refer, doesn't say it's a subdivision, doesn't say, you know, what kind of a development it is, but the planning board treated it as a planned unit development in its minutes and asking for the certification.
I'm just trying to kind of, like, it's been so many years, I'm just trying to go step by step by step to get us to today. The, so we don't have any record of really what was, when Attorney Bedanza went to the city and said, "This is what we are saying, we are," you know, it was constructive. There's no record. There's a letter, but there's no, there's no plan that was attached with, to say, "Here's complete paperwork."
No, there's not a plan recorded in the registry with the certificate of approval. There is no plan recorded. But there are planning board minutes.
And the letter was directed towards the Board of Appeals, not the planning board, correct?
Well, you see, it had an heading, Board of Appeals, in the body, it talks about planning board.
Okay. Has the plan been recorded?
Has the plan been recorded? No. The site plans, no.
Thank you.
I do have one question. This cul-de-sac's very long, and you said there were some changes. Has fire approved this drive? Do we have any documentation of it?
So...
Considering there was no record of any plans, I'm finding it hard to believe they could approve the drive without it.
It's been in front of the fire department, it's been in front of every department. And like you said, we've, I've been to the zoning board, the planning board, the Conservation Commission, and they don't have any documents. They say that with moving, things got lost. So I can only provide you with the documents I've saved over the years, but we've been running this off these plans since 2006. I mean, if there was an issue, you'd think someone would have said something sooner.
And it did go through peer review?
Yeah, I'm just saying, when normally, when you go before the planning board, if you make a change like that, they do peer comments from all the departments, and we have a chance to weigh in on, you know, the changes that are being proposed. Without that, they're not reviewing.
The changes that were done were basically elevation. We improved the elevation of the road to reduce the amount of blasting.
Right, but it didn't include these other last units?
They did. Those plans were, these plans were approved by planning, Fitchburg, I mean, the fire department, everybody, prior to us starting any construction.
Okay.
Like I said, and all the other modifications were mainly grading so that we could reduce the blasting.
Simple question, Madam Chair.
I would like to, there are one online person in the commissioner, so if you can be brief.
Absolutely. Two questions. How many units are on-site now?
Forty-one.
And how many are you requesting or do you intend to build?
Total of 54, and a rec building for 55.
Forty-one and 54. Thank you.
The delta's 13.
There's 13 more, yeah.
We have Kathy DeChamps online. I know she has been waiting all meeting. Please proceed stating your address again, please.
Hi, this is Kathy DeChamps, and my husband Ron. We live at 1307 Ringe Road in Werna Butter, and we've been living in this house since 1984. So we've been through the full 16, 17 years. What I want to talk, so not to add anything that has already been spoken, but I want to go back to the Fitchburg planning minutes of April of 26, 2022. And I would like to make sure that, you know, it sounds like we're trying to do a compromise, let her do some, you know, middle man, you know, get this work done, but I really would like to understand if there's any way we can impose some penalties for things that there was agreed upon in that meeting. No work on Sundays or holidays, no blasting or rock hammering on weekends or holidays, construction hours limited to 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., perform another pre-blast survey with 300 feet, notify all Abutters of every proposed blast, no construction vehicles over the way limit of Ringe Road, resolve drainage problems of the Abutters property, provide dust mitigation stemming from the blasting construction activities, and install appropriate erosion controls. And the, at that time, the, the date was 12/20, 12/31/2024, that was given. So that was two years, three years at that time. So here we are again, talking about another two years. And I would like to ask, at that time, Joanne had mentioned that she was finishing the drainage of her property. And I was wondering, is the drainage piece complete? Can we get an answer?
I don't believe I can get an answer from the mayor this evening, so, if that's what you just asked. I'm sure his office would be very responsive to a question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the detail with which you gave your comment. It's very appreciated. The building commissioner has asked to speak. That is the last public comment I'm going to take. I appreciate, again, that everybody is here, but it is 9:19, and we do need to wrap the meeting up. Mr. Barbadoro?
I'll be brief. It would be interesting to find out about that DEP construction general permit. The reason I bring it up again is because, just for people who don't know, this permit is a stormwater management permit, and it is not issued by the local Conservation Commission or the planning board. But if, initially, the project should have applied for one, and if modifications were made down the road to add additional units, then the construction general rule permit should be modified accordingly. And that might be an item that would help indicate whether or not there was any action on any subsequent minor, quote, minor amendments that occurred with the planning board, because it has been beyond three years for any of those modifications to my knowledge. So just wanted to clarify that, and then also say that if the road grades have been modified again, they, again, need to, you know, be modifying their stormwater mitigation plan. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. At this time, I'm going to close public comment, which means I close the hearing. Make it official. From here, what I would like to do is give, as part of deliberations on this matter, my thoughts on what is presented before us. Again, I have greatly appreciated the response that counsel has given. The first question that I had asked for a response on was whether the constructive grant was valid or was it a nullity. And that is because there were, I had so many questions about it. The lack of the plan, the original plan, and I very much credit that you have made every effort to locate that May 2006 plan, and you have submitted the December 2006 plan that has only the one modification. The inconsistencies in the document, my analysis is that this really was not an allowable action by the planning board, because this would have required a use variance in a residential district, which is not allowed by any board. It's not a relief that any board can grant in this city. I agree with counsel that whether or not the building commissioner's decision was correct, it does not matter. The only thing that matters is whether or not there was a constructive grant. I am not satisfied that adequate notice went out because there's no documentation, there's no list of Abutters, on that notice of constructive approval. With that being said, counsel pointed me to the case of Elder Care Services versus ZBA of Hingham, which led me to McIntyre v. ZBA of Braintree and Big Nami v. Serrano. And having looked at that line of cases, I am satisfied that counsel is correct that Section 17 is the exclusive remedy for pursuing any issues regarding whether the constructive grant actually occurred. Further, while I am not satisfied that the Abutters had notice, the city certainly did have notice. It had notice because that notice of constructive grant was filed. And where this is the city looking back at it, I don't think the city has the ability to deny that there was a constructive grant. Again, that I don't think the board was, had the authority to do. I think it exceeded its authority, but I don't think that the city has the ability to make that claim because the appeals period has expired long, long ago. That being said, it is, again, on the second question I asked, it is very unclear to me what was actually granted. I appreciate that minutes were provided. The one page of the application, and not being involved in the city, I don't know if there were more at that time, but the one page of the application does reference the PUD, section of the zoning ordinance. The constructive grant does not. We have this reference to expansion of mobile home park as opposed to manufactured homes. It's written as if it's a request for expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, and there are various sections in the constructive grant document that are contradictory. A constructive grant, because it occurs despite or in complete ignorance of any action the city may take, or may have taken, as far as a vote goes. To me, a constructive grant grants the application that was submitted, as it was submitted. The best evidence we have on that is the December 2006 plan. The best evidence we have on that is the December two thousand and six plan. If the May two thousand and six plan were available, I would say that the May two thousand and six plan would be what was granted. It is not. And, and so I think that in looking at this issue, the board could, should consider making a finding as to what was constructively granted. After looking that, at, at the plan, which I thank the applicant for providing and, and due credit as an accurate plan, I looked extensively at page three and counted, I counted the units. Because the number has changed a lot to me. And that may be inaccuracies in minute reporting. It may be just misspeaking at times. What I see on page three of that plan is forty-one units plus a recreational building. That's what I see on, on, and I've counted it about five times. And if in fact, not accurate, I am certainly open to be shown that I, my count is off. But that was my count, forty-one plus the recreational building. That includes the units that were going to be renovated. And again, I am open if, if somebody can point to my miscount. But that plan being the best evidence we have of what the application was, that plan is what I think was constructively granted. And in, in consideration of the fact that the PUD is the least inappropriate relief that could have been granted by the Planning Board. And it was specified in the application, I think it was a PUD. And I would suggest that the, the board should make a factual finding on what the constructive The question of earth removal, to the extent that that exceeds what is necessary to construct what is in that plan, and that would be the, the buildings, the hundred and fifty percent of the first floor, which I, I think for the calculation, and then the road. And I understand that there are likely DEP permits that you have that certain activity needs to, to happen in order to satisfy, satisfy that permit. I think that certainly is incorporated in the PUD. But earth removal was a separate use. It was a separate line item. I don't see earth removal mentioned anywhere in that constructive grant or application. And where there's more, a, a more specific special permit available, I personally, as one board member, would not consider the earth removal as part of the constructive grant to the extent that it exceeded what was necessary to construct the buildings and the road. The applicant provided significant documentation on the subsequent actions of the Planning Board. We had the two thousand and nine extension. We had the two thousand and ten modification. And I understand that last year, there was also an action before the board. Again, there, there are various numbers and comments. And, and I have, and I'm just going to say this, I have a great concern that all of those happened without any public hearing, without the proper notice requirements to abutters that one goes through at, at a public hearing like has happened here. Like the beginning of this case, I, I, I think the city, you know, is not with the ability to complain about the constructive grant. But I do think that those subsequent actions, whether or not they were classified as minor modifications, really should have come with proper notice to the abutters. That being said, I, I think that the actual analysis is much simpler. None of those actions by the board, they did result in minutes. And I asked the city clerk to work hard to find any records available. They located, of course, the two thousand and six minutes, the two thousand and nine minutes. And you had provided a draft version of the two thousand and ten minutes. Today, the clerk did locate the final version. So there is a final version of those minutes. What there is not is a decision. There is no decision on any of those modifications. And section nine of forty-eight requires final action. Case law is very definitive that final action means a decision. In addition, in order for a modification of a special permit to be effective under section eleven, that decision must be recorded. So we have both the decision, the final action, and the recording, which are not here in this case. And given the links that everybody has gone to, to try to document that, I just don't think they exist. I don't think there's a decision. For that reason, I don't think that any of the subsequent Planning Board modifications were effective. Again, I am one board member, and that's my opinion. I am going to look to move the appeals to a decision tonight. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the special permit application that is before us. But I'm going to note that I, I think there is, despite there being opposing sides here, I think there's a lot of commonality in that both the residents and the abutters would like the project finished. I, I, I think the city, I know I would probably want the project finished. And that means the road put in place. That means the recreation center put in place. I think the constructive grant encompassed those two old units being replaced. Beyond that, looking for a way for this to come before the city. And a resolution worked out on timing and minimization to abutters. Because I think both the butters' impact should be minimized. And I think that the residents need that road construction completed. And I agree with the gentleman who said he doesn't want to live with the dirt piles anymore. I'm sure that nobody does. I think that either an application to the Planning Board for a new PUD for those thirteen units, or the special permit to modify pre-existing non-conforming in a way that is not substantially more detrimental. I think those are the, that would be before our board. I think those are the two options. And, you know, again, as one board member, I am certainly very sympathetic to work that is required to be done in order to complete the project. I, and I realize there are financial, financial realities always with that happening. But I, I don't think that the pace of the project can continue as it is. And I think that's, you know, my statement on where I am. That being said, I am going to ask if there is any other deliberation from a board member on either of the appeals. I hear none. I am going to ask for a motion, oh, there is some, Mr. McGloughlin.
This, we had quite a bit of information to sort through and quite a bit of information that there wasn't, didn't exist. So, thank you, Madam Chair, for kind of articulating through, you know, all of what we've been reading and trying to decipher and summarizing.
So before I ask for a motion, I'd just state that I also observed forty-one existing. And I think what we're voting on is whether or not the applicant can appeal, grant the appeal of the cease and desist order. First, on construction under the special permit. And secondly, on the earth removal. And I think that the, the motion might be framed in a way that allows construction I strike that. Sorry. Complicated matter. We're going to need to make a finding on what the special, on whether there was a constructive grant. And then we're going to need to make a finding on what the constructive, constructive grant was.
Okay. So just for clarification, how many, so we have this clear. How many units exist on the site now?
The petitioner stated forty-one. I agree with that number.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm looking for the board to make a factual finding of whether or not the, there was a constructive grant of a special permit to the applicant in two thousand and six.
Does, does the award of a constructive grant is a piece of that, that it has to be?
It, it was filed.
Recorded?
It was recorded. It was recorded improperly. That is why many people who have, many people who have looked for this constructive grant have not found it. This is not the fault of the applicant. As far as I can tell, the registry of deeds misindexed the name and the address.
So it is recorded?
It is recorded.
Okay. Thank you.
So is the finding of fact a general point for all three? Or is it one of the items before us, one of the three items before us?
This is a finding of fact as to ZBA twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five and ZBA twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six, the two appeals.
Two pieces, right? We're doing the, we're doing thirty-five first, correct?
Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion that we make a finding of fact that there was a constructive grant of the special permit in two thousand and six as to ZBA twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five for a PUD.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
I would like to discuss that.
We just had a, a motion and a vote.
Without the option to discuss.
That is true.
Right. Let's discuss.
Mr. Reynolds, do you have any discussion on this matter?
I, I don't understand how I'm going to decide to vote yes or no. So I would, we've had some very great and long deliberation in an effort to do the right thing. I, I'd like to ask for a little refreshment of how do you decide whether there was or
Just to reiterate my statements and, and to review what has been submitted by the applicant. There was a matter before the plan, a petition before the Planning Board. We have the first page of that application. We do not have the plan associated with it. The application states that it was for expansion of the mobile home park, but cites the PUD section of the ordinance. The Planning Board, according to minutes, took vote to approve but never filed the The petitioner filed an application for a constructive grant within the appropriate time period. The document that was used has several discrepancies as far as the sections of the ordinance cited. It does not state the specific number of units. But it was filed with the clerk. And the clerk issued a notice of constructive grant. This was then recorded at the registry of deeds. My statement was that, while I'm not sure abutters had notice, certainly the city did at this late date. I don't think the city has a good reason to deny that there was a constructive grant.
So the, the motion is in the affirmative. Was there a constructive grant?
Yes.
And I would vote yes.
Okay. All other members continue to affirm their previous vote?
Yes.
We will consider the motion pa, that finding passed unanimously. Second request that I would make for a factual finding is what the constructive grant was. What were the terms of the constructive grant? And I would ask that this finding, or propose that this finding be framed by reference to the?
December two thousand and six plan.
December two thousand and six plan and the number of units indicated on that plan.
That's forty-one.
Which I count to be forty-one. But if I am wrong and we referenced simply the plan?
Forty, forty-one plus a recreation.
Plus a recreation. However, if I am wrong and we simply referenced the plan, there is no need to amend that for my miscounting.
Motion that the constructive grant granted the number of units in, as reference on the December two thousand and six plan, as forty-one units and a recreation building.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Any discussion on the motion?
We're going on what paperwork is available in a timeline. That one most fits the timeline. We can't be completely definitive. We're going to go on some presumptions. Does somebody have a copy of that plan? I, I probably do, but, you know, I'm, I'm swimming in paper. And if it's in this original packet, you can just reference the exhibit?
It's exhibit E, page three of the plan.
That's, that would be in this one then, right?
No, I put it, yeah, put it in there. I don't think that's on.
I think this is, this is a big one. This shows more than forty-one.
It's the date of the plan. That's the December plan. The commissioners hopefully put it up on the screen.
This one.
That's the same one. That's the same one.
How many total units are on this plan? Does anybody know?
I, again, I counted forty-one with one recreation building.
Is that, does this plan represent existing units and the request for added units?
That plan, to my knowledge, represents the proposed total of units. There are old units that are moved on the plan so that you may see buildings turned.
Christine?
I got forty-one, but what are these?
That was an existing building. It's eliminated, and that was a shed.
So I got forty-one. Okay, so this is the latest that was given to us?
Yep.
How many units are on this plan?
I believe that was stated to be fifty-four.
You can see that the
Okay, so, I'm just a little thrown off. I, you know, I'm a visual person. I look at the, I look at the cul-de-sac or the circle at the end. So basically, I think what happened is the units are closer together.
You can see that they
Now than originally.
They moved the park into the front of the units instead of on the side.
So the individual, when I looked at the plan, what I found was that the individual lot size shrunk.
Like half the size.
Shrunk. There's, I think, an additional one or two at the, around the cul-de-sac at the end. The driveway was moved from the side to the front.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So again, the question before us is that finding on what was constructively granted.
So, my, my motion was that in accordance with the December two thousand and six plan, it was forty-one units plus a recreational unit.
Right. And we did have a second. And there being no further deliberation. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That factual finding is made. I am now going to move on to a motion on approval in the affirmative on the approval to appeal the building commissioner's cease and desist order under section one eighty-one point nine-one to expand a pre-existing, non-conforming mobile home park. And I am going to suggest that we not only frames that in the affirmative, but we also reference to the extent that it prevents completion of the two thousand and six constructively allowed special permit.
That it prevents it?
Yes. By which I intend to say a motion to approve the appeal to the extent that it prevents the applicant from completing the construction shown on that plan.
Okay. So I'll make that motion in the affirmative. ZBA case number two zero two-two dash three-five for thirteen forty-one Ringe Road. And the request is to appeal to overrule the building commissioner's cease and desist order under one eighty-one ninety-nine, ninety-one, I'm sorry.
To the extent that it prevents construction of the
To the extent that it prevents construction of the plan as referenced.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I wish we had the discussion point in between.
Mr. Reynolds, go ahead.
So again, I'm just trying to follow, follow the bouncing ball. I think what, I think what I'm trying to ask myself is, depending upon which way I vote, and I'm not able at this juncture to talk about the special permit, which I assume is where we're navigating towards.
I, I think so, but I think time provisions will interfere.
So I'm just trying to understand line of travel. So when, when you say that, to the extent that it prevents the completion, so
A vote in the affirmative on this motion would allow the applicant to complete construction
Of forty-one units.
Forty-one units and one recreational unit and whatever is designated under the plan. The two thou, the December two thousand and six plan. A vote in the negative would prevent her from completing that construction.
Completing forty-one units.
Until special permit issued.
Until some other relief is granted.
Right. And it's my understanding, based off of previous discussion, that whether it's forty-one units or forty-six units, there's still some excavation, blasting, and processing that has to be done up near the cul-de-sac.
I, I think that's an interpretation of the plan, and I think to the extent that earth removal is implicated, that's the next matter.
I understand that that's the other one. And then the, the other point of conversation, which is maybe, I'll ask, is it here or not, was, we heard some other testimony about some conditions, which I haven't heard us talk about any conditions. So is, are the previous conditions implied?
We do not, in an appeal, have the ability to impose conditions. We have, we can grant the appeal, or we can deny the appeal.
And I think you're referring to conditions that were imposed by the planning board.
Hours of operation, dust control, this, that.
Those were discussed at the planning board last, at a meeting last year. There's no decision that is issued.
So in the affirmative, it would allow to move forward with forty-one units?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Closed.
I understand. It's a point of clarification, just a question. Is that, just so I
I'll allow a question.
Thank you. It's just so we understand with the vote that you're asking for, does that include completion of the road as shown on the two thousand and six plan?
Completion of the road as shown on the two thousand and six plan.
Thank you.
Similar point of clarification, just from my understanding, if I may. Would that be the December two thousand and six plan, the lot sizes, the way that they were? Or would that have to? I don't understand the, I think there will be some confusion if we say, yes, we can do it with forty-one units and do the road the way it was on the December plan if the spacing is not all the same. That'd be my question.
So it is a good point. The spacing is not as it was on the two sex, two thousand and six plan. It is closer, and I think any contemplation that we are going to move buildings is not a resolution that is desired by anyone, including this board. So we might reframe this again, for clarification purposes. That the number of units shown on the December two thousand and six plan may be completed. The road servicing them may be completed.
The utilities?
The utilities may be completed. I will state that in my mind, this means that the road ends before the full extension.
Would that approval include earth removal? Because that's part of the completion.
I, I think we need to address that separately.
Okay.
I'll make my motion to approve those comments.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion? And I appreciate the comments from both council. I'm not looking for discussion from the public. I appreciate the comments from both council on clarification. If we're ready.
Ready.
All those in favor of granting the appeal to the extent of the two thousand and six plan as restated in the motion?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? None. I'm gonna further ask
Michael? I'm sorry, could you rephrase that? I made a motion.
We voted on your motion. The motion was allowed. The motion was, was five-zero.
To affirm.
To, to grant the appeal to the extent that the cease and desist order prevented completion of the two thousand and six plan with comments on modifications to the lot size. Forty-one units are going to be completed. And the road necessary to service those units would be completed. I realize that's complicated, but I think that we've reached an understanding of what that means. And I'd like to move on. Moving on. I would also like to entertain a motion in the affirmative granting the appeal for any additional construction of additional units at the premises. And I, and I would like that to be a motion in the affirmative.
I would ask, as a point of clarification, what number are you speak, making reference to now?
We are making reference to twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-five.
Thirty-five is not over.
Because I think that there's a bifurcated answer to this appeal.
Okay.
And to the extent that interferes with that two thousand and six, December two thousand and six plan, the appeal should be granted. To the extent that the cease and desist order applies to any construction over and above that December two thousand and six plan, I think the appeal should be denied. That's the motion that I'm looking to make.
But didn't we just say to go up to forty-one units? On the last?
So we, we granted the appeal, again, on the forty-one units.
Right.
We should deny the appeal to the extent it exceeds those units.
But we said it based off the December plan, which was forty-one units.
Right.
So you're a step ahead of me? Trying, trying to follow this, because I would assume that the special permit would address anything beyond the forty-one units.
I don't want to make an assumption.
Okay. Understood. How do you, how would you like this phrased?
I'm looking for a motion
On ZBA two thousand two-two dash thirty-five.
In the affirmative granting the appeal of the cease and desist order to the extent it affects any units in excess of the December two thousand and six plan.
So moved.
Any second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes. So we're voting to see if the cease and desist applies to the original plan.
To if, whether it applies colloquially to any of the subsequent plans with additional units. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimously fails. Moving on to ZBA twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-six. This is the earth removal appeal. I am looking for an emo, for a motion in the affirmative to grant the appeal.
So moved.
Any second?
I'll second it.
Discussion on the motion?
Just, just to be clear, when we're, when we're talking about earth removal, does this go along with all of the other descriptions of excavation, blasting, and processing?
When I looked at this earth removal, so earth removal is defined as anything in excess of a hundred and fifty percent of the first floor volume of the buildings being constructed. And anything, and the streets that are servicing, and I, there may be a reference to a subdivision plan.
And, and any activities necessary to accomplish a hundred and fifty percent?
Right.
Understood. So my, I was just referencing the activities parked at, it's more about the hundred and fifty percent. And the motion again is in the affirmative?
Motion is in the affirmative to grant the appeal. Any other discussion on the motion?
No.
I would just like to say what I heard tonight was whether, whether we're talking about fifty-four units or forty-one units, there's still an element of earth removal activity that has to happen.
I, I'd again like to acknowledge that there is a DEP permit out there. There's a certain amount of work that needs to be done in accordance with that permit. And there may be a question of sovereignty on that issue anyway. But anything necessary under that permit, I think, is necessary to construct those forty-one units plus the recreational building on the December two thousand and six plan. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
One to four, the appeal fails. That concludes the prior matters before us. We have a special permit before us. It is 10 o'clock. I am going to suggest, given the discussion today, given the decision that was just taken, that we might better address this at the next meeting. That was the schedule for March. Does anyone on the board have the tolerance for a Thursday meeting in March?
I would be fine with that, Madam Chair.
Our alternative meeting day is Thursday.
I would be fine with that.
16th.
16th?
I'm okay with it.
What was the day?
March 16th.
16th, yep.
And you, and yourself, March 16th? I'm trying to provide a forum where we can not have other matters before us and devote our time simply to this case.
That's our alternate date is the second Thursday or Thursday, whatever we came up with. That way you won't be at the end. You'll just be the only person and give you a time to regroup and us free time to regroup.
Somebody has to bring the birthday cake for Joanne.
It's my birthday.
There'll be no presents, just saying. I'll bring a cupcake, but there'll be no other presents, all right?
It's okay.
It's cutting you off right there.
33?
Yes.
There are going to be decisions filed from tonight's ago?
There would be a decision filed.
In advance of the 16th?
In advance of the 16th.
And is a special permit pending and that was filed when, January, in January? Was that January 6th I saw stamped on that?
Yes. And I, I do know you have another matter before the planning board. There's another special permit there.
And when's that scheduled?
It's scheduled for the end of March.
The end of March?
Yeah, the planning board has its meeting at the end of March, I believe, the 28th or something like that.
So you'll be back before this board, before the, that planning board?
Yes.
That seems appropriate.
So there is a question, since the board has voted to approve the 41 unit plan, so to speak. One of the permits that's outstanding is the demolition of and replacement of all the units. The demo permit has been issued. We would look to receive the building permit when the application is submitted and we presume that that can go forward based on your vote tonight.
So that was within the count and I know that replacement of old units was also within that original plan from 2006. So I would assume the same and certainly I would receive, I would expect you would receive something confirming that.
So we're going to issue that permit then?
After, 20 minutes after the decision's filed.
Yeah. I cannot control the building commissioner.
No, I, I just wanted, because it's an existing building, we did get the demo permit. I just would like to finish it. I hate to leave it there all taken apart, you know?
So I, I, you know, approach the building commissioner, see what he needs from you other, you know, other than the decision here to proceed, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So if that's acceptable, if council could sign the extension on the January 6th. I don't know that it's necessary, but it is our practice. March 16th? I want to have it on the alternate here. So that'll be March 16th. Good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
If you don't see me, you'll know why.
Looking for a motion for continuance on ZBA 2023-04 to March 16th, 2023.
I'll make that motion under ZBA 2022-.
Right, 1341 Ridge Road.
Zero what?
08.
08.
08.
For continuance until March?
16th.
16th at?
6:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience throughout this meeting and for participating in our government. And happy Valentine's Day to everyone.